Please take the roll.
Trustee Clathard.
Here.
President Klein.
Klein, who's here?
Stanifer, absent. O'Brien, Burglin.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Whalen.
Here.
Zappa.
Here.
We have a very full agenda this evening. Those who've picked up an agenda off the table up there see that it does wrap to the back of the sheet, and so I would like to move things along with review of the -- an approval of the minutes in the regular board meeting of June 2. There, I do have a couple changes, minor as they might be. The peddler's permit application, which is on the second page. The individual's last name is misspelled. It should be spelled O-R-O-S-Z. That, once again, appears three times in that paragraph. On what would be the, one, two, three, fourth page, at the bottom of the Resolution 2009-4, we had a roll call vote. I'm just asking the question now, when we have a roll call vote, should not the names be listed as to the yays and the nays?
Who said yes and who said no?
Yes. Isn't that why we do a roll call vote? Not sure. Okay. Just wanted to throw that out there.
We've never done that.
Well, then I think we will start. When it comes to a roll call vote, we need to know there's a reason why we do a roll call, so let's document it. Anybody else have any other recommended changes?
You are right.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
No, he's right. It's just we haven't done that for -- had any no's.
Well, normally, we all agree.
Yeah, exactly.
Honestly, in the seven years plus that I've been on, I've never had a four-three vote.
I'm serious. Normally, you know, usually, everybody agrees. Well, I'm just saying usually, 90%.
Yeah, usually, you vote no or something.
Well.
Anybody else have any recommended changes?
No, but I move approval if nobody has. Has we got that one done yet?
Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Second. It'll be Colleen.
Yep.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion pass. Comments from the floor? There's an opportunity where anybody who would like to address the board on a topic that's not on the agenda, this is your time. Anybody? Yes, sir. Please step up to the microphone so that everybody out there in TV land can see you. Please identify yourself and your address.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your work with the village. Appreciate it. My name's Adam Sack, and I'm a coordinator for the North Hudson Neighborhood Watch Program. And I just wanted to present the opportunity that we are having our next meeting on July 16th, Thursday, at 7:00 PM here in the Village Hall. And then, we are also hosting a CPR refresher class open to all village residents. It's a non-certification class, should last about an hour, and that is in the conference room on July 15th at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Well, Adam, you'll be pleased to know that it also went out a little after 4:00 today to, on our phones, everyone who has a landline. Got that phone message.
Yep, sounded great. I really appreciate that.
Thanks for reiterating that for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is peddler's permit application, and I would direct your attention to the page immediately following the blank green plastic sheet. And this is the one for selling ice cream novelties. Is Mark, excuse me, is Michael here?
No, he wasn't able to attend.
All right. This, Michael sold ice cream here last year.
Yeah.
And I know my neighborhood kids look forward to it, as did I. I remember jumping off the ladder so I could go down and get my ice cream. Memory of my youth. So, Sweet Treats is the name of the company. I would entertain a motion to grant Sweet Treats a peddler's permit.
I would so move, so we can open it for discussion.
I'll second.
There was mention made of the timeframe of this. Is that a concern at all, that it goes into October? A typical peddler license expires after 30 days, and his request is from June 10th, 2009, through October 1st, 2009. I don't see any issue with it if the board doesn't.
The board has the availability or the right to extend that timeframe.
In fact, perhaps it would make more sense if we changed it to the term beginning July 10th, since today is already July 7th.
That would be very similar, too.
I've also talked with Michael and suggested to him that he put it on his calendar or come-out file next year to apply for this in March, to make sure that he can take full advantage of the entire summer and not just the last two months. He apologized that he hadn't and felt bad about it. I would also draw your attention to item 10B in, on our agenda, and we will be talking about changing, possibly changing, the ordinance so that people like Michael, after having had a review or a criminal background check by the chief and the administrator, can make a decision on that. But for the time being, what we need to do, because every time a peddler's permit comes before us, we have the same discussion. And so, we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded. Is there any more discussion about the ice cream vendor?
As long as he abides by the conditions set forth, I don't see an issue with it at all. I think it'd be great.
All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? There's a unanimous vote again. Next, we have a series of other permits. So let's take a look at, first of all, item number five, amended Class B liquor license for extended premises Cozy Corner. Is there a representative here from Cozy Corner who needs to speak on this issue?
There's another event that actually has been canceled.
Oh, it's been canceled?
Yeah, number five is off.
Okay. Oh, I see. All right. Number six, temporary Class B, Class B alcohol license, North Hudson Pepper Festival Incorporated.
I'll move approval.
Figured you might want to do that, Mark.
I'll second.
Do you want any more detail on that motion, Judge? Is there any discussion about whether or not we should allow beer to be served at Pepper Fest this year? Didn't think so. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motions, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone dare say no to that one?
I think so.
Okay.
What was, how did the motion read?
It was unanimous.
What was the motion?
Mark moved.
Mark moved.
Move to approve the Class B alcohol license, North Hudson Pepper Fest, Inc.
Item six.
The license approval is contingent upon...
Outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied. Are there some payments that have not been paid?
It's...
Standard bullet.
Yeah, it's the normal stuff, but we do this with...
Boilerplate stuff, okay.
The Mau Lu, we should be kind of consistent on making sure they're paid before we go to the next license.
Okay.
Does that need to be in the motion?
It says a suggested motion there.
Yes, I see that. Is that the one that you read, Mark? That's just fine. Yep, I'll do the suggested motion.
Okay. Guess it's done. Joe, was that all right that he amended?
Well, I'm just saying, since we have a change in the motion and it's been suggested, we might want to make sure we revote it and say yes or no, just to be clean.
Just to be sure.
You never know who's listening.
Well, I do, but...
Yeah.
The suggested motion is amended as to approve the temporary Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor license with an effective date of July 13th through July 17th, 2009, as recommended by the village administrator. The license approval is contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied. That's sufficient. That is the motion that was made. All in favor of that motion?
Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Just as, I think you said July, and I think you meant August.
You know, it says July on here. I read it exactly as it was written.
Good get, Bill.
Good one, Bill. Oh, we'd have had to push Pepper Fest up, wouldn't we?
The agenda says the August.
Yeah, and I'm reading right off the issue statement.
Need to come more often, Bill.
Let's not push it, Joe. Okay. We dispatch that one. Now, the temper, adoption of an ordinance, amending the zoning. Gloria, would you care to discuss this one briefly?
I think because it's gone to Plan Commission a couple of times, I'm going to defer that to Mike and Terry. They've been working on it, so...
Very good. Mike, the microphone is yours.
The zoning change ordinance, 06-2009, amending Chapter 98 zoning sections 33, 34, 56, and 57. As we've discussed several times now in the past, the Wisconsin State Supreme Court has ruled that municipalities must have some uses that allow certain activities without going through the conditional use process. As we've discussed, the Plan Commission has discussed it in the past, and we finally, last meeting, we had a good discussion where we discussed specific uses which would be permitted and other ones that would be, you know, subject to a conditional use. And hopefully, you have in front of you what those lists are. Terry, if you have any more comments on just, you know, I think it's pretty clear why we're doing it, and I think we've come up with a pretty good list of things where if people are in that particular zoning area and they meet the criteria, they can go ahead and do their businesses, and they do not need to come and get a conditional use permit.
It's interesting to me how many paragraphs and sentences have been deleted, making it actually more simple.
Actually...
You think it's more complex?
No.
Oh, oh.
No, we do want to talk about 98, 57 separately, so don't consider that one at the moment.
Okay.
I will just state that in that ordinance, the way it's laid out is the deleted language has the strike-throughs, and anything with underlines is being added, is suggested to be added.
And what's a little unique about ours compared to some of the other municipalities is we have a central commercial district, C1, which was basically what was commercial before July 10th, 1970. And then, our C2 and C3 are kind of more like everyone else's C1 and C2. So we have the, more like the professional areas and then the general retail. And C1 is kind of a funny one because it's what existed before. And so, that's why some of them, it may not flow like you would think, but on some of the retail things, you see there's a size limitation that separates the C2 from the C3.
I might also comment that each Plan Commission member reviewed New Richmond, Hudson, and I think the other one was Waukesha, Wisconsin.
Yes.
Yeah, so those three, they kind of looked, those three as sample ordinances, looked at what they had as suggestions and, or what they had actually in their ordinances, those three municipalities, and kind of worked through the lists and came up with these lists to try to make it unique to North Hudson.
And so, these particular ones where they talk about the various zoning districts, that's the section 33, 34, and 56. The 57, we might as well just briefly touch about it. 98-57 is the application process, and on your minutes or on your note, you may have some changes on that, but we actually, as a Plan Commission, did not discuss those. And on further discussion, Terry, myself, and Becky, is I think we see no need to change anything on 98, 57.
So that should go back to the way it currently stands?
If you just leave it the way it was, it fits for us, and then we don't have to worry about it not being correct tonight.
So the motion, whoever will make the motion, that relates to 98, 33, 98, 34, and 98, 56 ordinance. Is that correct?
Technically, I don't have 56 in front of me, so I don't know.
I don't see a 56.
Which one is 56?
But it's listed on here, so that's why I'm asking.
Let's, what is 56? Do we have a zoning?
Wouldn't have a book here.
Then...
Yeah.
Do we have all three districts, Mike?
Where's 56?
We have all three districts. 33 is the commercial districts.
That's mainly what we talked about, is 33.
Yes.
I'm not sure what 56 is. I would have to look in the zoning code.
Then perhaps our motion tonight should be simply Chapter 98 zoning sections 98, 33, and 98, 34.
Terry, take a quick look at it, maybe we'll straighten it out.
This ordinance has somewhat, has already come before the board in one format. It's been redone several times, so I'm not quite sure if the 56 should be part of it or if it was initially and now isn't anymore.
The section 33, when you say what is permissible in the commercial districts without a conditional use permit, that's 33, and that's what we had discussed at our last meeting and approved. And as you look at what the approved uses are, you see they're pretty much still the type of uses we had in the old code, the high-traffic versus the low-traffic areas.
Yeah.
Then tonight we'll, tonight, 33 and 34.
Yeah.
And we'll table 56.
Table 56.
Can we just pass it all in one? Because, I mean, I'd be literally doing two ordinance versus just changing...
So you want to just table the whole thing?
Yeah, if we could.
Want to do that?
Sure. So that we do it all in one, so...
You'll just have to let the Plan Commission know if there's any of those sections we need to discuss.
Do they need...
I think that Terry...
They need to discuss 56.
Terry, can look at it and let us know. 56, I think, is pretty clear what we need to do there. Okay. And I think we, you know, if we just, if we hold off for one month on 56, that one will be easy.
Okay.
I think, is there anything else on 33 that, since we're going to table it for a month, it sounds like, is there anything else on 30? 33 is really the meat of what's being changed here. So if anybody has any suggest, the rest of it's just kind of procedural to make it work. So if anybody has any suggestions, go back to Mike on 33, this would be a good time to make them, since we're going to table it for a month.
Well, and that would give the board a little bit longer time to review it and get a good...
If there's any questions now on some of the things you see and questioning why. For instance, under conditional use as opposed to permitted use in one of the areas, small engine repair shops, you might remember some of those discussions we've had in the past. So that's when you don't just approve carte blanche, you have them come to the Plan Commission and discuss conditions.
Would it make sense, then, Terry, to ask for a motion to table the adoption of the ordinance 2000, or ordinance 06, 2009?
Use the whole thing.
And we can make it that simple.
I think that's what Gloria would prefer here, yeah.
Before we table that, Sandra mentioned 98, 34, and I don't see a reference to the detail of 34 in here either. I just, my board packet has 98, 33, and 98, 57.
Where is 34 mentioned?
On the agenda. So just so we're all on the same page before we table this, so we address it properly when it gets brought back up.
Let's make sure that next month, we have in our board packet each one of those sections that we do want to vote on.
Are we able to discuss it at the next Plan Commission meeting? Is there time?
Yeah, I think there is, because it doesn't have to be a...
It's not a public notice, so we can get it on the agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, and sometimes what happens is the board agenda needs to go to the paper long before I get the detail.
Sure.
So it may have been presented like this initially, and then when I get the detail, I can't change the agenda.
Yeah.
It's already gone to paper, so...
Okay. We'll discuss it next week.
I would then entertain a motion to table adoption of ordinance 06-2009.
I'll move that we table the adoption of ordinance 06, 2009.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. All in favor of the motion to table, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I have a feeling you're going to stay up there for the next one.
Yes.
Which is a little more straightforward, isn't it?
I hope so.
Want to tell us about ordinance 09-2009, which is an ordinance amending the municipal code for the Village of North Hudson relating to Chapter 86 subdivisions. All yours, Mike.
Okay. We've discussed this a few times in the past. It came up when one of our citizens, happens to be in the audience today here, he owns three contiguous lots, and he'd like to adjust the lot lines, and what happened was, from the time his lots were originally platted and he purchased them to now, the ordinances have been changed, requiring a larger lot size, and so technically, under the rules as they exist now, he would not be able to do that. We've discussed it at Plan Commission a few times now, and what we did on our last meeting is we have a change, or we have this ordinance which would amend the subdivision zone, and it basically does what we discussed last month. It would allow a property owner or owners of adjacent lots to let them change the lot lines as long as they meet all the conditions, including the minimum lot size area as it was in the pre-1987 rules.
Do you have anything?
No, that's exactly correct. I guess, just to clarify that a little bit, we're changing it, currently, it's 13,000 feet, and this is going to drop it down to 10,000 feet.
Only on lots that existed before 1987 that you're changing. Well, it's very important that you're changing lines, too, and they still would meet the pre-1987 minimum lot size.
Right.
Of 10,000 square feet.
Correct.
Setbacks all stay the same.
And we know from the materials that have been submitted to us that Bill's property does, or Bill's property does comply with all this.
And of course, yes. And it's an ordinance change which will allow other peoples in the future to do similar things.
And we will be seeing more of that.
Mm-hmm.
I've already been told. So, board have any questions of Mike or of Terry?
I guess one more thing, Mike. I think it was the Planning Commission's recommendation that this be passed, so that is...
Oh, yes. It was the recommendation to you. If you have a piece of property that has one house on it, and someday, there could be three houses on it, well, that's two more property taxpayers. That's a good thing.
It's funny you say that, because that's, I saw a dollar sign.
And two more families that can move into North Hudson.
That seems fair to me. I recommend approval. Ordinance number 09-2009 has written...
Do I hear a second?
I'll second. We do have a question in the audience, Judge.
Yes, we do, but I want to give the board an opportunity first, so anybody else on the board have any questions of Mike or of Terry? Sir, would you please step up to the mic? Identify yourself and your address.
My name's Eric Court, and I actually live across the street, and I have a question regarding the municipal code, Code 86-4, conveyance between the joint property owners. It says, "No additional parcels are thereby created by doing this." And this parcel on the tax record is considered two lots as one parcel, so you'll be creating two parcels, hence changing the code of what your municipality says.
So one or two? Becky, you looked at that, right? Is it three separate parcel numbers?
There are, there are two, there are two parcel ID numbers for the purposes of taxing. However, there are three lots. There are three lot, you know, lots in that.
So...
There are three lots, but it says, "No additional parcels." There are two parcels. Three lots, two parcels.
May I just suggest that this goes to the question, my application, not the ordinance?
I agree.
I agree with Bill on that. I was thinking just that, that this is really not a question about this ordinance, although maybe it is a little bit, because if he's pointing out that the new ordinance, if you adopt it, has some ambiguity between what the word parcel means and what the word lot means, it may be something that we need to talk about a little bit, not in relationship to Bill's parcel, but in relationship to the way the ordinance works. But I'm not quite following what he's saying yet about the parcel versus lot.
Sorry, this is from the code.
This is the existing code, yeah.
When Eric's done, I'd like to address that.
Well, go on up to the mic, Bill.
No, I'd rather he finish up.
The only other comment I have is because it's a corner lot, there's a lot more issues at stake here with the corner lot. It's treated as two front yards, so that means you have a 30-foot setback on both Crowley and 10th, and there's a 30-foot setback on the lot adjoining the lot in question, which means the house can only be 17 and 1/2 feet wide. As we all know, a standard garage door is 16 feet. This is going to be a very small house, and we want something like that in this community.
I think that's definitely a question specific to Bill rather than to the ordinance. I guess it gets to what the definition of parcel is. What did you say you looked at, Becky?
We looked for the tax rule.
I think lots 78 and lots 79 are listed on the tax rolls as one, under one parcel ID number.
And that's just for tax purposes?
That's for tax purposes, yeah.
But it's still three separate lots?
Three separate lots, two parcel identification numbers.
Okay, thank you. That's...
Well, I would say the way we're wording this now, we're sort of using the words parcel and lots within this ordinance as synonyms.
Have we ever used the term parcel line as opposed to lot line? We always use the word lot line, but we don't use the term parcel. See, we talk about parcels of land that are defined by lot lines. I'm not saying that's making things clearer, I'm just saying that that's, that is the jargon that we use. So, Bill?
Having had some experience with the code for...
Microphone, please. Don't go away, Eric.
Thank you.
And I'm speaking not to my particular application, but to the ordinance. It's pretty common legally, both in this code and throughout things, that you use various terms to refer to pieces of land, I'll call them that. A lot is used if you have a subdivided piece of land, either by a plat or a certified survey map, generally, sometimes outlot. You see that. Otherwise, if there was a piece of land that is either above your zoning, your subdivision code requirements, and therefore doesn't have to be split down and officially divided, or pre-existed, which there are many, 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 we sometimes legally call them tracts, T-R-A-C-T-S, or parcels, or various terms like that. And they all refer to something that by law is a transferable piece of land, generally. Terry, if you agree with that.
I would agree with that.
And in our code, that's been done that way in various spots. Tax parcels are uniquely for tax reasons. You cannot legally transfer tax parcel number X, X, Y, Z, Z, whatever it may be. It would not be a valid legal description. And I think that's true throughout the state. So the fact that it's tax parcel is almost just a different category. In addition to that, and this applies to mine as well, tax parcels are a decision made administratively by the treasurer, the assistant treasurer, or actually, usually, the tax lister that the county has. Somebody who's hired to simply put stuff on paper that can be transferred to the computer and so on. and so on. Carries no other legal significance other than to say, "Send money, folks, we need it here at the village," or the county, or whatever. So, I think it's clear that the code has always meant parcel to mean one of the pieces of land that exists. When, what Eric is referring to in the current code is where no additional parcels are thereby created. In my case, I have three lots. I'll use it only for example, not for your thing. We have three platted lots. There will still be three lots. There aren't gonna be four lots. If they were not, if they existed before the zoning code in nineteen seventy, they would be called whatever they are, they still would be three parcels, and there would be three now. The tax parcel situation that, and I'll use mine again, I don't know when that ever went to one tax parcel description for two lots. I think there's a lot of properties in the village that are the similar thing. It does not undo the fact that they are subdivided lots, or you'd be taking away something that's a very important legal right. If you sent a bill out to Derek Construction with one tax parcel tentatively covering ten lots, and then said, "Well, now you no longer have ten lots, you've got one bigger piece," you'd all be called as witnesses in the litigation resulting, so. I understand, although I'm a little blindsided by not knowing this was coming, I understand the attack, and I think it doesn't make any sense. Your code, your ordinance proposal, if you wish, switch it to something else other than parcel, but I certainly don't think it says tax parcel, or is meant to be tax parcel.
I'm sure the reason it was put into one tax parcel is because part of the garage is on one lot, and how could you tax three, or the house and part of the garage in one and tax on a separate parcel? So, I'm sure that that's why it's one parcel, as far as tax, but not, it doesn't, like he said, it doesn't change the fact that there are three lots.
What will happen, though, is the parcel of land that currently the garage is sitting on, that parcel of land, and I'm using parcel now as a tax identifier, has just increased in size, and then the other parcel, tax parcel, has just diminished in size. So, you still, what we're going to have after we're finished with all this, is for you, Bill, two parcels of land.
Actually, three, because we have a lot.
Three eventually. I know you have, I know you have a third one, but wouldn't that parcel that is actually, let's call it one and two, two is where your house is, would that not then be one parcel? Are you, do you pay, do you pay three different taxes?
Actually, we did once, but we sold off the part of this lot.
You did?
Back in nineteen seventy.
Which then created another parcel.
No, we, we bought the house and the two lots that were there because the sellers insisted on also selling the corner lot.
Okay.
We took an option on the next two lots, including the one that's immediately west of us, and exercised that about five years later. Paid Zaffra Construction to bring sewer and water up to those, because there was none in Crowley, and sold off the part of this lot to cover the cost back in eighty-six, eighty-seven.
I think we're getting down into another topic here, but.
Probably should hold off until we get to Bill's, yeah. I'll give you my opinion on the word parcel there. I agree with Bill, that doesn't mean tax parcel, that means lot.
Does this ordinance nine dash two thousand and nine need to be amended based on the input that you just got from everything?
I don't think so. I think it works the way it works.
You think it works the way it does?
Yeah, I think it works now. Yep.
Okay.
I have a question, just real basic theory. I have owned two acres of land. We acquired a half an acre next to us. We rolled those two parcels together, so we have one parcel ID. Is what's being said here that I could not in the future break that back out and sell that as a separate piece?
Sure you can.
Well, that's the argument that's being made.
That's sort of what I'm thinking, is the argument that we're talking about here. So, if that.
I disagree with that. I don't think that's what this ordinance says.
Okay. So, I would have the ability to break it out as long as it's a legal sized lot and buildable.
As long as you meet all the other zoning code and everything else, yes.
And we have to verify that Bill's house does meet the setbacks, and that if it's a seventeen-foot wide house, so be it. That's what our job is.
That would be Bill's.
That would be eleven B.
That's an erroneous suggestion, by the way, but I'll deal with that with mine.
That would be eleven B on the agenda, but.
Okay.
If I may suggest, if you wish to address this question directly, would be to add the last part of this proposed code, parcel as used herein, quote parcel as used herein, does not mean, quote, tax parcel.
You could do that just for clarification purposes.
You could put in the definition in the beginning of it, some defined parcel.
I'd like to make a comment to Jim's thing.
Thank you very much.
Just to show you where the planning commission was coming from.
Sure.
If you have a one-acre lot that you bought a long, long, long time ago, if you wanted to take advantage of this and have only a ten thousand square foot area, you couldn't do it because you'd be making more than one lot. So, you can still split it up using the new, what, the new nineteen eighty-seven, or whatever it is, at thirteen thousand square feet minimum size, and then you can have whatever lots fit in there. But what this clarification does is if you had four pieces, it, you know, if you wanted to get between ten and thirteen thousand square feet, you'd have to stay at four pieces.
Okay, I understand, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mike. I appreciate that.
Terry, do you recommend that we add a definition of parcel here? Would it add anything?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Sometimes when you try too hard to define things, you end up causing yourself a problem somewhere else down the line. I just think the word parcel does, is, words have meanings, they have generic meanings sometimes, and specific meanings, and sometimes they have technical meanings, and the tax parcel ID is a very specific area of something the county sets up, and this word here means parcel more generically in the kind of the land use sense, as Bill was talking about. If I want to sell a piece of land, or a parcel of land, or a lot, or a tract, or anything, those words kind of are generic in that sense, not, not technical, specific to the tax ID.
Okay. Look to my left, Danny. Eric?
I just have one last question as far as the ordinance after nineteen eighty-eight or prior to nineteen eighty. Does that mean that you can only have the house sit within those guidelines? So, here it says that a one-family residence is ninety feet, but yet the lot is gonna become seventy-seven and a half feet. So, how is that applicable for today in two thousand and nine? How can you build that? I mean, the house, the house is today, but the lot is back in eighty-eight, so how do you have a seventy-seven and a half foot wide lot where the requirements for a one-family residence is ninety feet?
I really have to suggest that we stop talking about Bill's lot until we get to eleven B, because that's where this is on the agenda. So, please bring that point up when we get, when we start talking about Bill's lot. What we need to focus on right now is whether or not this ordinance is gonna work for the village, not for Bill.
So, I would make a motion that we adopt, for adoption of ordinance oh nine dash two thousand, two zero zero nine?
Actually, you already made that motion.
We did.
And, and Joe made the motion, and you seconded it.
I seconded, so we just need to vote on it, and Terry is comfortable with it.
Unless the board has any more discussion.
So, I ask, board members have any other comments or questions? Need the roll call on a resolution?
You don't need one.
The ordinance.
Okay. Only on ordinances, huh? Or do we own an ordinance?
It's not a requirement. It's sometimes a good idea if you know a vote's gonna be controversial, but if you're fairly certain the vote's gonna be on.
Majority roll call.
Okay. All in favor of the ordinance, the adoption of ordinance zero nine, two thousand and nine amending chapter eighty-six? Please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign? That motion passes. We now have a resolution that comes before us, I believe, every year, isn't it? Gloria, would you care to talk about the resolution that will give you the, I guess it's to give you the authority to send this report in?
Basically, we're, it's affirming that the Board of Trustees has reviewed this compliance report that Mark needs to submit to the DNR on an annual basis. They just want to make sure that, that the board has seen it, and so this resolution needs to be sent into the DNR along with that, that annual report.
When you say Mark, you're referring to Mark Ekblad?
Yes, sorry about that.
That would be Supervisor Public Works.
Are there any major changes in this between this year and last year?
There is not. We will be looking at, however, the funds.
Yeah.
To make sure that we are designating out the amount of money that we need to have designated for replacement. Do you want to comment on that at all, Mark, or?
Those funds have been building year after year, is what I'm guessing.
Take a second, I, but the biggest thing without reporting myself is Gloria, you are basically, Gloria, help, I should look here at the financial part of this, so it's no, come back and say, "I'm sure we've got the right money, the right accounts." Basically, we just have to keep developing the cost of what it costs to rebuild a lift station, we haven't made any, to make sure we have the money to be able to, be able to, we lose a lift station, fund the flutters in there, we have the money to be able to rebuild that station.
And right now, all the monies in the replacement fund are somewhat commingled, so this would designate a certain portion of it towards the listations.
In explaining some of the, basically, we've made two categories. Basically, one for the one for the lift station maintenance, and then one for the replacement fund.
Which is a different fund.
Right. Yeah, I was just noticing that we had additions for almost thirteen thousand, and subtractions or expenditures over time is around nine, so the fund balance increased by somewhat in excess of three thousand dollars, so.
And then it shows what should be in your replacement fund.
Yeah.
Of eighteen thousand, that's what needs to be designated towards the lift station repairs or replacements.
All right. I recommend approval. Do we have, we don't have a motion, but I recommend approval of resolution number two thousand and nine dash zero five has written.
I'll second. Any other questions or comments regarding this compliance maintenance report? This is a public record. If you'd like to come in, you can learn all about lift stations and manhole covers.
We currently have two lift stations, or more?
Currently, there's five lift stations in the Village of North Hudson. We maintain qualifications, so my personnel, or I should say myself and my staff, we actually are in charge of four of those lift stations. Waste by treatment plan actually takes care of the large lift station at Riverside Drive that sends their, like, we pay for any maintenance costs to that.
Isn't this about?
About two years ago, all the funds came out.
A report, not an update on lift stations?
The personnel basically, and then they, basically, I give what they're directed, and we figure out how much it's gonna cost, and I let the president go at that time, it was Larry Larson, saying, "I'm gonna write the check for this amount of money."
And isn't that, lift station market consists of a container about the size of this room underneath Riverside Drive with a.
It's quite that big.
Pretty darn big.
There's a wet well on our side of the house, and then from there it goes through a horse mane to get down to the lift, to the other lift station wagon on the other side.
Is this thing in?
Pumps it up over here, grab the keys.
Is it in fairly good shape, I hope?
Well, let's put this way, it's in fairly good shape for the ABs.
And, you know, my neck, how old is it? Didn't we put new pumps in there?
Yes, they said station been rebuilt.
Yeah. Come on, it's in great shape.
Aren't we talking about a report? I don't think we're talking about the condition of the lift stations.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the resolution, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you. Next, new business from the board or staff. This is, oh, this in the past has always been at the end of the meeting, and I've decided that we really need to move it up before everybody leaves. Just a couple things from the president's comments, and then the administrator, Gloria has a couple things to talk to you about. You'll notice that the item that's on the agenda here says repeal of direct legislation or legislation ordinance zero four dash two thousand and two, removing the hundred and fifty thousand dollar referendum requirement. Just a general comment here, over the course of this year, we're going to be revisiting many of the ordinances that are on our books. We're going to be looking at ordinances that no longer apply, that are obsolete, that have outlived their usefulness, and in fact, the one that I'm directing your attention to, removing the hundred and fifty thousand dollar referendum requirement, is such a, is such an ordinance. The law is pretty clear, and I'm gonna ask Terry to comment on this as well, that once a, that the board has the, can take the opportunity to repeal an ordinance after it's been in effect for two years. It has been a lot more than two years, or it's been more than two years, let's leave it at that, and I'm just having it on the agenda here for the next several months. Eventually, after the public has had a chance to come in and address us regarding it, we will then ask for a repeal of that ordinance. Not asking for any action at all tonight, but just opening up for discussion.
You know, I don't have a problem with revisiting that, and, you know, there's other things that we could do in terms of repealing it, we could modify the language of it.
Good.
So, it wouldn't necessarily have to be repealed, we could modify the language of it to make it suitable for the times, or for whatever, we wouldn't necessarily have to repeal it. That's what I'm saying.
Well, within the past year or so, it has held the board's, the Board of Trustees' hands have been tied, as has been both Public Works, the administration, and so on, and as far as some improvements to the, to the village. There have also been opportunities that we know present themselves where if we don't act immediately, or within a very short period of time, those opportunities come and go. For, as long as this resolution is in place, we need to come before the public, we only have two opportunities a year to do that, one in November and one in April, and that really doesn't give us much time at all to be able to make some of these decisions and judgments. So, Terry, would you comment? Terry and I have discussed this briefly over the phone, and I'd ask him to just make some comments at this time.
I don't have comments at this time. I'd like to take a look at that and then get back to you.
All right, that's fine. All right. The only other thing I have is an invitation from the library, and I'll pass this to any other board members who would be interested in this. This is, anybody who would like to attend the meeting on July thirteenth, see me, and I will give you a copy of this letter with some more details from the Hudson Area Joint Library. And we also received a thank you note from Lori Noble, and I will pass this up and down the table for you to read. It's just a thank you note to the board members for her time here. I don't have anything else at this time. Gloria?
The first item, peddler's permit application. It has come forward to the board once before through public safety. We felt that since I had issues with the application and wanted to have some input in the changes that affected the office, our office, that we would hold back, and we got together with the chief and came up with another proposed ordinance that will go back to public safety and then back to the board. I'm just making the board aware that that's in the works. Number two, two thousand and ten budget timeline. I'm hoping to see the next agendas. I'm hoping to see the next agendas with budget discussion on everyone's agenda so we can get started and have the committees get their piece of it done so that we can move it forward on to the Board. Wanted to mention that we received a nice insurance dividend from the, of the Wisconsin Municipal Mutual Insurance Company, nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. It represents the fact that they're a nonprofit, and so it's, that amount is devised by how long you've been a member with them and we, and how low your, your insurance claims are. And we've gotten one of the highest ones in the state, so that's a good thing. And then also, we will be receiving a check that Mark Richard had been working with on the emergency management for that storm in two thousand and seven, and that's going to be about eight thousand dollars. I have an exact amount, but I don't have it with me, but it's, it's over eight thousand, so. I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Do you pass this down to Joe? You're back on, Mike.
On the Plan Commission chair update, we had two topics last month. We've discussed them already tonight. So, A is complete.
Say goodnight.
Okay.
Now item B.
Okay.
Item B is Bill Gilbert, conveyance of adjoining properties slash lot line adjustment.
I understand from the clerk's office that you folks have received the prior submission that we had gone through with Plan Commission. We started this process, by the way, in March, and I came in because I felt that the current ordinance and the spirit of it, that I should be here applying to you to, you know, to make the village aware and so on. That's the purpose the ordinance was first adopted. The initial reaction, by the way, was, as you read it, where it says adjoining landowners, we, not I, we, my wife and I own both or all three parcels. So their first question was, are we even adjoining landowners? Even though we're one and the same, we thought we own adjoining parcels of land, and that's what the ordinance was intended for. What we, back on real quickly, Carol and I are looking at selling our property. There's some needs that my wife has, just completed chemo, and that was three thousand dollars a session, six thousand dollars a week, and she may need more, so we are in position of looking at our assets and dealing with that. We have three lots. We once had a fourth one. Do you, do you all have this, by the way? We once had a fourth one, which was Lot seventy-six here. We bought these two in eighty-one, and options on these two, I mentioned that. They're all created by Bjornstedt's Fourth Edition in nineteen seventy-three or four. At that time and all the way through nineteen eighty-seven, the code provision was ten thousand square feet, seventy-five feet width at the building setback line, fifty feet at the street. Our lots, like most lots, over the last thirty years have exceeded those numbers, but that's what the code was and that's what the code is for all lots, quote, established before nineteen eighty-seven. If you have a two-family lot, that's a, that's a ninety-foot or a hundred-foot requirement. And even what we proposed, first, we simply asked a surveyor to find the corners, because I couldn't find them over the years, so we could put posts up. Realtors like to be able to show people, here's where the lot corners are. When they did, they discovered that only these three back corners away from all the streets, in fact, have posts. I had known where this one was, but no, no other reference to put it anywhere. Where you see the circles are, represent lots or stakes that they set when they did this survey in March. We presented that to the Plan Commission. That's the survey that's attached with the intention that it's going to become a certified survey map, but we didn't want to invest time and money on putting stakes in the ground in a formal CSM until we knew what the Plan Commission and you folks thought made the most sense. We thought this was. We had a couple of other options presented to the Plan Commission that I don't think make a lot of sense, but make a little more uniform, you know. In other words, it would have just kept a piece of land back here with that lot to get square footage, not to have any viable difference. So what we're asking is to move over seventeen and a half feet, because we found that the garage is seven point two feet over onto the other lot. We didn't know that. It may be why the seller through the realtor insisted on selling them together. They didn't disclose that to us. We didn't have a survey done. This is all wooded, heavily pine wooded, so you cannot look through and get any sense of, of what the dimension was. But they insisted on it. We understood because they wanted to get money out of both lots for their own reasons. When we discovered that, we proposed that we move over seventeen and a half feet. This would still be seventy-seven and a half, which meets the width requirement of seventy-five under the code, and it would be ten thousand five hundred and some odd square feet, which meets the ten thousand requirement. We also then said, well, we might as well move this over ten feet, make both lots be about a hundred, because there's no sense having a hundred and twelve feet across here and have this lot still remain at ninety. Just made more sense to us to do that. The house is a long way from this lot line. So we went through this process. In all candor, I disagree with the interpretation that the code adoption in nineteen ninety-eight was intended to mean if you did a lot line adjustment, you'd have to meet the new code. Reasonable people disagree. That was never the context that it was presented in. It was presented at a context, as I recall, Mark, I think you were on the Board then, that the village simply wants to know when these things happen. And they happen a lot. To give you a sense of that, in the current Plan Commission, four people by their own bringing it up have had lot line adjustments in the last X years, whatever it may be, with no question about this. It only came out from a, originally from a non-legal staff member. Not illegal, but non-legal background. So that's what we have in terms of the questions that Eric raised. Let me tell you this, the, as I say, the, the lot, minimum lot width that's required is seventy-five feet. The minimum square footage is ten thousand. The proposed lot would meet both these. The math that gets him to a seventeen-foot house width is erroneous. The width of the new lot at seventy-seven and a half, you're required to have a thirty-foot setback on both streets. And the same code provision for corner lots that says that, says the other two lines are then treated as side lot lines, which is a ten-foot setback. So the buildable footprint on that lot is thirty-seven and a half by a hair under ninety-six. And that's slightly under by a few hundreds, thirty-six hundred square feet. Some of you know our house just by going by. We have one of the larger houses in the neighborhood. We don't have, including a large garage, we don't have eighteen hundred square feet on our footprint. And I know that none of the houses in the area have that much on their footprint. So there's lots and lots of room to build a house in there, including, Eric may want to tell you how big their house is, but I know that Sam doesn't build houses larger than, than eighteen hundred square feet either, so. That house will be setback at least as far, if, if and when there's a house on that lot, at least as far as Eric's house is, both from the street and from the, from both the streets. I think actually, we're going to be requiring that it be back further from Cradley Lane than, than thirty feet, because I think we want it to be back at least as far as our own house in that neighborhood. We also are going to sell the house first. Great market to pick to do this, but we don't get our choices sometimes. And if the people that buy the house want to buy the corner lot, we will certainly give them that for a shot, in which case there may be no house built there at all. So, that's our request. I'll first take any questions you might have or any further.
I move approval of, of the, do we have, is there a issue statement for that? I didn't see it, or is it just?
I'll move approval of the conveyance of adjoining properties and lot line adjustments for Bill Gilbert.
We will, by the way, bring a formal CSM in when, when this is.
Just want to get a second and a motion then.
Second.
Thank you. All right.
What I meant by that is, and I had talked to Becky about it and Gloria, the, we would assume, we would trust that if you approve this tonight, it is contingent on us submitting a formal CSM consistent with this and recording that. We wouldn't be off giving any titles to anybody based on your action tonight.
And this map, this survey map that's included is what it currently is and not what it's proposed, correct?
I'm not sure I know what you mean.
Well, it's still showing the lot line going through the garage.
This one, Bill.
And I think what you'll see when the CSM is done, I, I don't want to speak for a surveyor, but I think, actually, you have somebody here who deals in that field. I think the certified survey map will probably take those two lots to dotted lines to somehow represent that these are the original Bjornstedt lots, lines, and then solid lines at the new locations. But, but it will be very clear which, that, you know, which is, which lot is each, and they'll be like this.
So what the Board would have to prove is actually this, the map in front contingent upon?
Correct.
Because the certified survey map behind is the existing.
And that certified survey map is?
It's not a certified survey map yet either.
It's called a map of survey.
Yeah, map of survey.
The other reason we didn't want to go charging forward, we didn't know how this would all shake out when we first started it. And secondly, if surveyors put stakes in the ground, neither they, you or I or anybody can go take those out. So suddenly, we start to get stakes at this proposal and stakes at that proposal. And so you notice, they didn't even put the stakes that represent the existing front middle points, which were never marked by the original surveyor, village attorney at the time, who represented the developer as well.
While you're there. Any Board members have any questions of Bill or of Mike? Am I right? Any questions?
I don't think we have a second yet, do we?
Yeah.
Oh, we do all caps, or I missed that?
Holene seconded it. Eric, you had your hand up.
I only just first heard of this myself about a week and a half ago, and I don't actually agree with the comments. I have the municipal code here, section ninety-eight, three, one, and it says that, since this has two corner lots, you have thirty feet on both Cradley and Tenth, and then it also says minimum rear yard setback is thirty feet, and then a minimal side yard setback is ten feet. So that does make seventeen and a half feet wide property. And I know Mr. Gilbert, he said he'd be moving away, but the rest of us here in North Hudson, we have to deal with that, and that's a very small house, and I don't know why anybody would want to approve that. I brought tape.
Eric, I was wondering why you came with a steel tape attached to your belt, and now I know why. Okay.
So we're all clear?
If I would direct your attention to the, Eric's reading a section of the code that I think that deals with the front yard. If you look at the bottom of that page, starts the definition of rear yard. This is page, now it's in ninety-eight, six of the code. The top corner of the page says ninety-eight hyphen five. The bottom starts, and this is the last two lines and wraps around, "Rear yard means that part of a lot except a corner lot, extending the full width of the lot between the rear lot line and the nearest part of the principal building and other structures. On corner lots, all yards opposite from the sides of the lot abutting a front street shall be considered a side yard." So there's no question that we've got to be thirty on both streets and ten on both of the other non-streeted lots.
Gloria, do you want to comment on? Oh, you just did.
I would have one small comment on that, and that's that, in order to build that house, he's going to have to meet the code, whatever it says, and that's kind of a side issue from whether or not I'm going to accept his application here, because he's not, he's not applying to build a house on that lot.
Yeah. That's my point, too.
And that would have to come, right?
I don't think anybody's going to accept a seventeen-foot wide house.
Then why do it?
It's not the width of the trailer.
You can do it, you can do it. I mean, someone can have a small house in North Hudson for less money, why not do it? And that's my concern, because we have to live with it, as well as all the neighbors.
But wouldn't the point be that Bill would get stuck with the lot, then?
If he could sell it? He even told us, he's leaving.
Well, if he sells it, then someone owns the lot and can't build a house on it, wouldn't they?
But we're going for approval right now, are we not? I just want to make sure.
No, we're just approving a lot, we're not, we're not approving any house. And a person would, would have to.
But the requirements are, I mean, you could build a house, it's big. I mean, there's nothing that says you can't. It's always, you need the square footage. So you'll have essentially like a trailer sitting there.
The only way you get to this is if you were to treat the side yard between our house and this lot as a rear yard. Any interpretation of, of the code that says rear yard would take the other, the deep way. But it's the reason that the code in fact says, when you have a corner lot, we aren't going to require one thirty-foot setback, we're going to require you to setback from both streets. And conversely, we're going to let you be side yard for both of the other lines. Side yard is ten, the street setback is thirty, that's forty. In most parts of the world, seventy-seven and a half, when it's forty, it's thirty-seven and a half, not seventeen.
But thirty, thirty minus thirty-seven and a half is seventeen and a half.
Eric, you want to make yours thirty on each side?
I'm not necessarily, I don't know.
Kevin, did you want to? I think Kevin might have something to offer.
Kevin is our village engineer with Cedar Corp.
I guess, like Bill is saying, thirty feet is a requirement for, for the corner, corner lots. So you would have to have something on Cradley as thirty feet along with Tenth Street. I guess the big decision is, is for that particular lot, which, what is going to be considered the front, the front yard? Because like you're saying, it has to be a minimum of ten feet on the side. So if you consider, you know, the front of the house is going to be along Cradley Lane, that would leave them with thirty-seven and a half feet to put the structure in, is the way, is the way I interpret it.
Oh, we've got a map up on the, that's for later. Oh, okay. The computer behind me just woke up. Kevin, would, would it help if you drew it up on the?
Yep. Yep. That's, that's exactly what Gilbert's saying. So, you know, if you do the math, you actually would have, you know, thirty-seven and a half feet along Cradley Lane to build the structure, the building along that side.
That's from Eric.
Yeah. Instead of the seventeen and a half.
And in your opinion, Kevin, is that an unusual house by any means?
No, because, I mean, you're still going to have a lot of depth to work with on, you know, the.
Yeah, that's the way I look at it. That, that thing is a hundred and thirty-six feet deep.
Yep.
When you take off thirty, you've still got a hundred and five feet for a backyard and the house. And yet, I, it's not an issue with me. I think we ought to move along. We've taken enough time on this one. I mean, it's an issue, but I think we've taken enough time with it.
It will be defined at what point anybody goes to build a house.
Sure.
We're agreeing on the lot now.
Just like anybody else.
I think it's very clear cut what our responsibilities are.
Get a building permit for?
Axie, the building inspector will axie be.
Sure.
You know, whenever the person comes forth to put the structure on the lot, I mean, he'll be looking at those determinations for the setbacks and stuff.
And Kevin and I just looked at the code section I read you, and I don't think there's any questions saying that the interior lines would be ten-foot setbacks, not thirty.
Board have any other discussion or any other questions regarding?
neighborhood, but I'm glad that Kevin, I feel comfortable with what Kevin said.
I guess we're ready to vote.
I have no comments.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I would ask then, all those in favor of adopting the motion that Mark made and Colleen seconded, the conveyance of adjoining properties for Bill Gilbert, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. This motion is passed.
Can we add a contingent upon a certified survey map being presented and recorded?
Say it into the mic, that'll be fine.
Adding a contingency for a certified survey map being presented and recorded at the county.
No objection to that being.
That's required in the ordinance anyway, that he do that, so.
Well, usually they're presenting it right now.
Beforehand, yeah.
And so we don't have that, and that's the only reason I.
I have a, okay, I have a request that we move the Public Welfare Committee item up to the next item on the agenda, and we'll hold off on Personnel and Finance until afterwards, there being a number of people here who are interested in that topic. I would then like to turn this over to our Chairman of Public Welfare Committee, Jim Thomas. Jim, do you want to start with the deer?
Yeah, we can go back to the.
Back to the other items later.
All right, thank you very much, George.
Just a comment of my own on this. This is a topic, we're about to talk about deer management, and this is a topic that came before this, not all members of this board, not, oh, I'd say several years ago. As much, we had quite a contingent of people here who came before this board who wanted us to do something about it. At the time, and with the circumstances, the way they were, it would have required us to have a capital outlay of probably over $8,000. And it was determined at that time that we could not, quite frankly, afford $8,000 for deer management. Jim Thomas has been working diligently on putting something together, working with just the right people, and we're in a position now to hear what he has to propose. I have read this information that's in the board packet in great detail, and I do have a number of questions, a number of comments, but I would like to open it up first and let you begin and introduce Lon and his team, as well as some of my neighbors who I see out here.
That's great. Thank you very much, George. And yes, this has been a controversial subject. Obviously, we've got an issue currently in the village that many municipalities in this state and other states have of out-of-balance deer population. Our goal here, being the fact that we are, we have a limited budget at this time, actually we have nothing budgeted for this, we have the potential of getting some grant monies going forward for 2010, but it's our goal to move forward with some type of a plan, basically to put together some type of a cost-effective pilot program that will allow us the opportunity to obtain needed data so that in 2010, we'll be able to know exactly what we have to do all at the same time while making an impact in the deer population this year, hopefully. Many people have got concerns about urban wildlife management programs. Just so everybody is absolutely clear, I am of the belief that bringing in sharpshooters or marksmen is just not the answer. We've done much research on it, it's cost prohibitive, it's not as safe and effective. There are contraceptives, there are all types of different modes. We actually have the opportunity, Harvey Halverson from the DNR, DNR biologist, will be able to speak in more detail, but very simply put, urban archery is the best program. After Harvey has done, Lon Faya, a very experienced wildlife, I don't know, what would your term be, Lon?
Sportsman.
Sportsman, thank you. That sounds much more politically correct than hunter, that's what I was looking for. Has spent a substantial amount of time and has put together a proposal that I believe that we'll find very, very entertaining and will offer us an opportunity to establish a pilot program. But at any rate, if it's okay, Harvey, are.
I'm here.
You are here? I have never met you, I'm only on the telephone. It'd be wonderful, would you mind saying a few words and answering some questions?
I am open for discussion, I don't have a presentation.
If you could just step up to the microphone there and you'll.
I brought along some of my data and resources. Typically, when I deal with deer, it's been in, let me wait.
Yes. Oh, I say can't hear you out in TV land.
Hi, I'm Harvey Halvorsen, I'm your wildlife biologist with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources located in the Baldwin Service Center. I've been doing wildlife management for over 25, 30 years. I'm a professional that has been trained at the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point. And the issue of urban deer management is one that I don't have a lot of experience with, but I've been an avid hunter, I do manage deer, I do have a real concern about the public and the perceptions of deer management, and how to segue into the fact that deer are a public resource. Every man, woman, and child in North Hudson owns technically the deer in the village limits. So with that preface, it's a really hard balancing act to make sure that what program is going to be developed and hopefully approved here is going to be tastefully done, it's going to be ecologically considerate of the deer population and the carrying capacity of the deer, and that's how I manage deer in the rural areas and especially in the farmland areas. When we get into an urbanizing area, that's one where we have trespass issues, we have small lots, we know that the deer do very well here, and the threat of the normal everyday predator-prey relationship is totally disrupted. I mean, deer are able to reproduce at a rapid rate. Fawns are bred the first fall. The rate of recovery from a mild hunt, let's say every two antlerless deer for every buckshot really doesn't depress a population. So in an area where you're trying to depress a population, one needs to consider habitat management, one needs to consider whether or not baiting and feeding are an issue. Another issue is whether or not you're going to have a effective hunt, which is going to be palatable for the residents, that is going to be quiet, which is a bow hunt, which is going to be an effective use of archery skills, which is going to be a hunt that is going to collect deer into very safe shooting lanes as a possibility, then one that is going to assure that an archer is going to be competent with a knowledge of where to place an arrow to kill the deer as effectively as possible. And lastly, and there's probably several others, is how is that deer going to be retrieved? I was just at the St. Croix County Sports Club meeting in Richmond, and what our wardens brought up was a couple of points, is, number one, is this village in North Hudson looking at hiring somebody to do this, or are you going to open this up to the residents in your own village? And that's a concern by some. And number two is, are the residents that are older in North Hudson, I don't know what your population dynamics for humans here, but as the people get older and they stay closer to town, they don't venture out in the north woods, they don't have a cabin, they might feel slighted if you don't offer them an opportunity to shoot with a crossbow in the village limits. You're going to issue probably a permit to discharge a bow and arrow. So the wardens thought that perhaps we should be looking at a crossbow permits for some individuals on their own private property. And then, lastly, is how is the deer going to be utilized? Is it going to be retrieved if it's shot on a parcel of land that there's no, it's no trespassing zone? So those are some of the issues that have to be addressed. But in my normal deer duties, I get to set deer kill numbers, I get to use all sorts of sex, age, kill ratios to figure out what the population is, and we're in what we call Deer Management Unit 60M, and that's, a 60M is a metro unit, and it is bounded by Highway 29 through River Falls, Highway 65 up to Roberts, 65 up to New Richmond, the old four-lane slab, 64 coming into Somerset, and then down to Holton, and down over the Willow River, and then on down to, I believe it's Prescott area. Within that area, it's about 215 square miles of land. Within that land base, we have 37% deer range, so everything you see here in green is considered deer range, supportive of deer populations, in which case it's been set to have 10 deer per square mile a deer range. Now, in my numbers, and what happens with these numbers, is that every year, we collect data on every deer that's been killed within this management unit, and right now, based on our numbers, we're starting to bring the population down in this unit, but still it's 200% over goal. And that means that there's a lot of private land, and you might have access issues in North Hudson for that private land, but we know that with the recent outcry against Ernabuck, and these are deer hunting strategies that we've been using, we are going to face continued high deer populations in your areas around North Hudson. When you look at North Hudson and you come across Lake Maloo in Willow where it empties into St. Croix River, you'll see that North Hudson is bounded by phenomenal deer range, which is Riparian Corridor along the St. Croix River. You have deer range along the entire Willow River State Park and Willow River system, and then, I don't know what Hudson's going to provide, but usually the interstate might have some limit on deer movement, but you are just bounded by tremendous deer population so that a one-year fix is not going to curb your population. It's going to have to be a combination of probably habitat management, getting folks to not feed deer in the wintertime, and then having a very effective deer removal program. That's just the start. I have not had the time really to digest the proposal in depth, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity. The grant application would be coming in, and I understand you would use Lon and his company as a grant applicant, where the department would be willing to look over the application, I'm willing to work with Lon on the application, I could probably get several copies of what's been done in Green Bay, Grantsburg, in Hudson three years ago. They did hire sharpshooters, I did issue the permits for the sharpshooting program. They charged $100 per deer, so I'm not sure of the cost, where you've been getting the cost to hire a sharpshooting program, because what happens in the sharpshooting program is that you have these, a company come in, they'll set up bait piles, they have access on usually public lands, be it park or some type of common space, outlots, and then the deer are baited over a series of maybe a week or two. Then the sharpshooters come in, they use what they call an urban deer gun, it's a real quiet silenced firearm, they kill deer, and it's usually in the wintertime, the threat of deer spoilage is reduced, and my understanding is that $100 a crack, that that was a pretty effective means of removing deer. So that is one thing that I would suggest to still look at, is what an urban deer company could do to remove these using specialized baiting and shooting techniques. In that case, I did hear some negative opinion back on that, in which case, these were hired guns to come in and take care of the deer, and the sportsmen and women were very upset, and justly so. If you have a long-term program, you don't want a one-shot deal, you want to be able to educate your public, you want to have a chance to utilize your own local sportsmen and women in your program, and then if you have to, and you have a company that's willing to be your applicant on these damage claims and on the applications for urban management program funds from the DNR, that's another good option.
Beautiful, thank you very much. And we have addressed many of these issues that Harvey had brought up, and I'm going to, at this point, just let Lon sort of take over from here because he's much more knowledgeable with us than I am.
Well, certainly much less knowledgeable than Harvey. Do you folks have the packet that was given out? I have a couple more things to add. One is, top is a letter from a resident who's, a North Hudson resident who could not be here tonight, and then the two articles underneath that address successful programs, one of them I see already do have in the packet, so the one that's been added is dealing with Bismarck, North Dakota archery deer hunt, which is the longest-running one that we're aware of. It's been going on now for 21 years, and it's been very successful in addressing their deer population scenario. Do you want me to go over the whole thing, beginning to end, or what?
Does that make sense, George? I think it's probably the.
Then we can get to the questions.
Quickest way to. Well, it's quite a long document, I'm hoping that the.
I'll skim.
Board members have read it.
We have too many deer for the carrying capacity. Now, the goal, one of the benefits of living in Wisconsin is you get to see deer, you get to see bears, you get to see all kinds of different wildlife. We're not attempting to annihilate the population, it would be impossible even if that were a goal, it just couldn't be done. What we're attempting to do is to reduce the number of deer in North Hudson primarily by removing antlerless deer, because that's the breeding population. We, looking at numbers that we got from Harvey, estimating globally, there's about 80 deer per square mile, not in this core range, covering the whole area, we need to be at 10 to 20 deer. So what we've put together here with this proposal is a proposal that models the Grantsburg, Wisconsin program, models the Ecologics out of Pennsylvania program, the Bismarck program that utilizes the existing DNR archery deer season as our guiding framework. We don't want to recreate the wheel here, people have already done this, okay? So what we're proposing is a pilot program for 2009, where primarily on private land, because there really isn't public land, where you could set up a bow hunting situation, and without blocking it off from the people, have it done safely. But we already have several parcels in the village where the landowners have said, please come, we can, you can hunt here. One of the offers was, sit on my deck, my wife will bring you coffee, it won't be difficult at all. The only requirement they said was, please take them all, but I don't think we can do that. What we're proposing to do is to set up for the village a very tightly controlled pilot program for 2009, where we'll have six hunters taking out between 30 and 50 deer from the village of North Hudson. Now, what's important with this program is that we're setting up the guidelines for what the hunters need to be, how qualified they need to be, and if you've read the program, it's very stringent. We're setting up the website, which accumulates all the data, so we'll be able to tell the village at the end of this program which parcels we hunted, how many hours were spent, how many deer were seen, how many deer were harvested, how many shots were taken, you know, what has happened in that regard. All of the deer will be processed for the residents of the state of Wisconsin. The state of Wisconsin has a deer donation program where all of these deer can be brought to a couple of different processing houses, the closest one happens to be in Prescott, where the deer can be donated to the state of Wisconsin and the processing paid for. Okay, that's very, very important. We also will have an application where if someone wants a deer that's a resident, we have the ability, once it's tagged, Harvey has explained to us, that we can give that deer to that person if they want to do it. We just want to make sure they understand what this means. This does not mean little white packages, this means that a deer minus its insides is delivered to your front door. That's quite a different scenario. The goal of this program is to remove primarily from private land 30 to 50 deer this year. We will then come back armed with it at no cost to the village, and this is what's important. There's no cost to the village in Grantsburg, they manage the whole thing. In the entire Grantsburg proposal, there's not one mention of liability insurance in the whole program. We have $3 million total, 1 million per occurrence, 300,000 bodily injury insurance that covers not only the hunter, but each landowner whose property we'll be hunting on. And to be honest with you, I think it'll be 99.9% on private land. I just don't see. I just don't see a site in Hudson, public land, other than in your parking lot, where we could, uh, safely do it, and I question whether that would work. Um, it, we will come back with the data, and, and we have an application up there, and armed with that data, we can then open up this program for 2010, if the board approves it, to allow the residents of, of North Hudson, and, and even outside of North Hudson, to apply. And as long as they're willing to adhere to the standards that are set up, the qualifications that are set up, the doe harvest requirements that are set up, we will then allow them as well to, uh, partake in the program for 2010. The idea is to set up a long-term, year-by-year-by-year program that has some administrative cost to the village, that's where the grant program comes up, but that does not have the sharpshooting, uh, scenario, which has been seen as the least palatable, least palatable, very effective, but the archery programs have proved to be about equally as effective, much more cost-effective. Okay? Um, without going through it, uh, uh, bit by bit, that's really what we're, we're proposing to do. We already have four sites picked out on the, uh, uh, east side, near George's neighborhood, that, where, where we have permission. We're working with St. Croix Storage to, uh, work in the area, uh, uh, around their buildings. They're fine with that. We'll be talking to landon, landowners, uh, north of Cratley, in that wooded area. We'll be talking to landowners across 35, in the, the, uh, you know, station, and, uh, going up to the new, what's the new subdivision up? Starwood, going up towards that, that area. We've got to attack this from several different areas. You can't just concentrate, as they did in Hudson, in one park, go in and, and take out a bunch, and then be done. They, they, they mul- they multiply their back. It does remove the deer, but you have to do it, and do it, and do it, and do it. And Bismarck is a, is a great example, where they've been doing this for 21 years now, and they have brought the population, over time, into a manageable situation, where your car collisions are reduced, um, your shrubbery complaints are reduced, where people are enjoying seeing wildlife and living with wildlife, which is what we're really trying to promote. And we're promoting bow hunting as a recreational sport. I don't know that we want to get into crossbow. I, I, I think you, you know, these are things we can do. We're not talking about crossbows at this point. We may have to address that issue. It's a legal means of hunting. Um, but we do not have to address it in 2009. Any questions?
I did read this over multiple times, and-
Yes.
I have some questions that are going to be ver- some are very easy, some we're gonna have to talk about. Uh, you've used several, uh, TMAs and FMAs, um, or 4LMA's, and, uh, that's a, that's a, TLA is a three-letter acronym. I created that acronym to make a point. What's a GMU?
Oh, it's a Game Management Unit. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, the Wisconsin DNR segregates the, uh, uh, state into game management units. What Harvey showed you was our game management unit, 60M, as he outlined it on that map.
Right, okay. Um, QDMA, that's an FLA.
QDMA is the Quality Deer Management Association. It's a think-tank, if you will, for sick deer hunters like myself, who, um, can do nothing more with their spare time, but think about how into growing bigger and better deer and chase after them.
Okay. Now, I guess I could do the math, but could you translate the, uh, numbers that you had here into, how many actual deer estimated are there in the village?
Well, what's the square mile, uh, what is the square mile? How many, how large is the village?
One by 1.1.
One by 1.1, so about 1.1.
One.
Okay? Yeah, it's pretty easy math. Yeah? There you go. Now-
What I was wondering is, are you gonna tell me that there's, I'm gonna use the word "only," are you gonna say there's only 80 deer in the village?
No, no. Um, because if you listen to what-
Cause I bet there's-
If you, if we, if we understood what Harvey was saying, in that entire district, 37% of which is prime whitetail habitat, there's an estimated population, and correct me if I'm wrong, of 80 deer per square mile. That's, they don't live everywhere, they're all in the 37%. What he also stated is that where we live is in the best of the best of the best. You know? That's where we are. So, conservatively saying 80 is a gross, a gross underestimation. But I haven't counted them, so I-
And I, now, how do you count them?
Right. Well, we're gonna count them when they're on the ground. And we're gonna count them as they come into the stands, and we're going to provide that data to the village and to Harvey, who will then be able to actually give us, at the end of '09, armed with that kind of data, a more accurate estimation of what population remains. 30 to 50 one-time is not gonna get it done, but it will, it will make, uh, uh, an apprec- an appreciable dent in the population for going over into winter, which means they, those 30 to 50 do not have 1.7 fawns, because the .7 is the hard one, um, next year.
Now, more to the meat of my questions here, that I'm anticipating some of my neighbors' and also my constituents will be asking. Um, it's interesting that the control method will be archery, only hunting on public ground and private land where written permission is received. I wanna, that's on, the pages aren't numbered, but it's on the second-
Yes.
-page on the back. I wonder if you could tell me if we have a minimum lot size for this? I live on a hundred by a 230-foot lot, and, as do most of my neighbors. And to me, that lot is a little bit too small to have deer hunters on. Now, I may be wrong on that, but that's just my initial reaction. I am not a hunter.
Right.
So I don't know that.
It may be, it may not be. Okay? Uh, in general, that's pretty small, and the way-
Right.
-the way the lots lie along Helen there, that's probably not an ideal situation. We're really after the deer that are running along that back ridge. Hence, we have Jeff Hall back here, um, whose wife will bring me coffee. Um, and, and you know, that, what, what we're looking for here are the best sites-
Yeah.
-where this can be done unobtrusively-
No, that I understand.
-safely. So, for example, the webs, is it Webster Park, where the sign that the-
Yeah.
-which I think the sign looks nice, by the way? Um, uh, that park, there's plenty of deer in there, but it's impossible to hunt. It's packed with houses all around. You're gonna sit there, and you never know if it's, what's coming next. Yes, the deer is there, but, you know, safety has to be first. So that's where we're really thinking that private ground is going to be our best avenue, and the sites that we've pegged so far are very safe. Let me tell you, the, the Hallbeks, um, Halamas, which are at the end of Meadow Drive, um, where the Burnley property goes back there, that big, uh, open field, some of the people that walked over here today saw seven deer in there on the way over here. Um, there are two lots there. How big are those lots, Gary? Roughly?
Couple acres.
Couple acres. And we've got permission on two of them right there that back up into there. That's important, because it's safely away, there's lots of room, and there's lots of deer. Um, the St. Croix Storage is great. Why? Because there's very little activity there. You're not in, um, so each site-
Right.
-is not equal.
But you have addressed what I'm concerned with-
Yes.
-not on small lots.
Yes, sir.
Um, other things that have come up since I first learned about this from my neighbors, um, and they're all in favor of this, by the way. I haven't talked to anybody yet who was against this. Um, you're talking here about antler-less deer. Well, fawns are antless, anter, antler-less also. Um, are you looking at fawns? Are you looking at mature does?
Well, here is the situation. A deer eats, a deer breeds, a deer hits cars. Um, fawns are legal in the state of Wisconsin. Um, a legal deer is a legal deer. As I heard someone say earlier today, when they hit your windshield, you don't care what sex they are, what age they are, or what size they are.
Exactly. Will you be posting the dates and the times that these hunts will take place?
No, sir, because it's going to be primarily on private property. At least, that was not our plan. None of the programs that we looked at did it that way, so we didn't think we needed to recreate the wheel. Again, we're on private property. Someone should not be trespassing on that person's property. We'll have written permission from that landowner. We will meet with the landowner and devise a hunt plan for each site, so that, now, this is more for 2010 going, going forward. Let's say your property, which probably wouldn't be, but let's say it were. We would sit down with you, and we would decide, where would you sit? Where do you want the stand? What hours are okay with you? How do you want this done? Whatever. That would be then on our website. When a hunter goes through this, the selection criteria and is actually approved, he'll be assigned where he can hunt. Now, it's also come up, what if they own their own land? Well, they could apply, they would be bound by the same rules, they could hunt their own property with no problem, but they would have to abide by the same rules as everyone else in the program, because while we're utilizing sport hunting's, DNR system as a ru- as our overriding structure, this is not a sport hunting exercise. This is a deer control exercise first. The sport hunting is an added, uh, bonus for those who care to partake in that. So, um, uh, that's how, that's how we do it. We would not post, we would not post because it would not be required of a private landowner.
Okay. Let me open this up to the rest of the, to Gloria, the rest of the board.
Can I ask some questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, like, the financial stuff, that's all I want to know about. Um, you're proposing that for 2009, there would, would be or would not be a cost to the village?
I'm proposing zero cost.
And, um, that would be because there would be no grant application at that point?
There are, there are costs to running this program. There are costs in terms of insurance, there are costs administrative. What my proposal specifically says is that we would absorb all direct costs related to the program. You wouldn't have to manage it, you wouldn't have to do anything but approve it, we would pay for it. Now, what we excluded were administrative costs. In other words, if the village passes something and has to act on something, we would not expect to be billed for, um, time for that, but, uh, there would be zero cost to the village.
Okay. And is that also true for 2010?
Yes, ma'am, except we would like to take advantage of the DNR grant money that's available, and apply along with the village, with us being the designee, to recover these funds to help defer the, the, the costs. Okay? And a cost, again, are primarily administrative. There's insurance, there's baiting, there's background checks, which we would absorb this year. There's, uh, and everyone has to agree to a background check. Um, there's corn for baiting, which is legal under Wisconsin state law, there's gas for transporting them to the, the, uh, uh, processing house. You have to dump their inside somewhere. Most, George probably doesn't want them in his backyard, and neither does anyone else. They will be brought out whole. So my answer, my, my, in 2010, we'll be applying for the grant proceeds, and that will be your only cost. Um, we are recommending, for 2010, that a deer management committee is formed within the board to address the daily, or weekly, or monthly back-and-forth things that, that need to come up. Because that's how everyone else does it, so seems to make sense.
Well, and, so, in 2010, the village would need to apply for a grant?
Yes.
Okay. Because I, I believe it's December '09 will o- be the deadline for 2010? Okay.
And we will work with Harvey, um, and have already been working with Harvey, to make sure we're ready to go, um, with that proposal.
And, and just reading about the, the DNR plan that's, uh, required for these grants, I, I see he has a proposal in here. Is that real close to what the DNR would require of the village? Or would that plan come from this gentleman? I, I guess-
Lon could be the applicant for you, and you could authorize him to apply for your, your grant.
Okay.
And as far as the mechanics of that grant, and the, the content, uh, will need to be looked at a little more closely. I have not had the, the time to give a, a real good, good overview. So, some of the elements that can be included in the plan that I've seen, like in McCross, includes aerial overflying to get the natural count, a natural survey of the deer post-hunt, with snow on the ground, with known deer areas, in which case you could do a one-time survey, a helicopter survey with some of these helicopters, it'd be $400 an hour. You could probably do that in an hour's time. So those are the kind of grant expenses. We should research to make sure that your bases are covered, because it'll be a competitive grant system. There's only like $25,000 in grants available statewide. And so you figure 10 other, uh, cities might be applying for these grants, because your grant would be 50% of your cost, maximum cost of $10,000.
$10,000.
In which case, you could get $5,000, so there'd be-
There'd be five-
Five grants available then.
Mm-hmm. And, and I would venture to say that, let's say we did not get the grant money. The program will run on its own. The applicants that apply will be paying a fee, a nominal fee, to cover the insurance, to cover some of the direct costs. It's these incidental things that we're gonna want to do. We're not, I'm not hiring a helicopter. I mean-
Thank you.
Okay. Um, though the White House just bought a new one, I heard.
So, so you're saying they might have a used one?
They might have a used one. But no, but I, I honestly believe that we want to, we want to plan and apply for this grant in 2010, but let's say worst-case happens, we don't get it. For 2010, we'll be prepared to come to the council with a program and a budget that funds itself. We're not, we're not looking to feed at the village, um, trough here, for lack of a better standpoint.
In 2010, if it wasn't working out, we'd just say we're not gonna do it, but-
Correct.
2009 isn't gonna cost us anything, right?
That's a guarantee.
And I did include the package from Grantsburg, which is another way to do it, without the DNR grant, uh, process, with no cost to the village. And I, I'm understanding that you used some of that as your guideline?
We feel that the Grantsburg program is lax. We feel that their hunter requirements are lax, we feel their lack of insurance is atrocious, we feel it requires too much administrative time and management from the village. Um, we think we can do better.
Well, that's wonderful. But at least you, I mean, it gives you a guideline of, you can always make things better.
Right. And that's what we're trying to do, is make it, not, not to denigrate what they've done, let's take what they did and apply it to where we are now with what- Grantsburg's a far different city or village than North Hudson is.
But it, but it gives you the-
Yes, ma'am.
The process.
Just while, while Lon is up there, a few things that should be made mention. Lon has already gone through the effort to show his, uh, devotion to this. They've created a website, anybody can go on it, um, it's basically rivervalleydearmanagement.com, and it's at its, you know, initial con- conception, but when it is operating fully, landowners will be able to go on and say, I would like to allow my piece of property to be hunted on. Everything will be done through this website. The times that hunts are, uh, documented, the, the deer seen, everything will be tracked through this website. Uh, that is one aspect of this that I think Lon has taken this way above where Grantsburg is at. The second part, obviously, is the insurance. The third part, um, you know, Harvey has been nice enough, we can self-register deer. It's a huge thing, because it eliminates the chance of meat spoiling. We can do this in a timely fashion. Nothing gets, uh, field dressed at a resident, the whole deer is taken out. So transparency in this entire plan is the key thing that we are striving for, so that it appears to the residents that just magically the population of deer decline. Um, the administrative time, I feel that with Lon's effort that he's put into it, and the effort that I've put forward, at this point, um, if I spend one-tenth of the time I have up to this point, I can pretty much administer this. The issues that I think we're concerned about fate, being faced with is, how do we communicate what we're doing to the village residents? We can obviously do it through our XM voice system, but how are we going to connect the landowners and make this, uh, everybody aware of what's going on?
And my big concern is, of course, financially, making sure that when, in our next budgeting process, is this is the way the board decides to go, that it's included with it, and we know what we're getting into right up front, so that we can plan appropriately. That's, that's my concern.
We'd be able to get back to in, by December, with a status quo of where we're at.
It'll be tough. It's gonna be, Gloria, it'll be impossible, other than a scientific wild ask us to, to come up with what it requires.
Well, if we're gonna plan on spending money next year, we need to have something budgeted, even if it is a swag.
All we're asking for is to apply for that grant. Let's apply for the grant, which is a zero cost. If we get the money, great.
I've been with Harvey and Brad. Brad is, uh-
$5,000.
Yeah. Would you, would you be able to share the mic with Lon for just one ques- series of questions? And if anybody else has any, we'll try to keep this very brief. The, the grant program, as I have it here, basically they cover 50% of anything that we incur. That can be bait, that can be spraying systems. Harvey's got a good grasp of it all. I don't think that we're going to really need too much, but I think it is worth us applying for the grant, so that we have some latitude if any costs are incurred. My understanding, as I've reviewed all of this and, and sat down with Lon, I really have a hard time understanding how we could incur more than, you know, $1,000 a year in costs. With the fact, you know, the biggest issue is going to be baiting with feed, you know, and at this point, the hunters are responsible for that themselves. So with that being said, it really is potentially the ultimate tool for, for reducing the deer herd.
It's as close to free as you can get, wouldn't you? And it is, it is free, but I don't want to say-
Right.
Free, because there, there is some administrative time, and time is money.
We need to get donations from the people who want to give her to the deer.
We can, we can.
That's a good point. You know, is there any way, any type of donations that we could reach out for with this program? And do, you know, I don't know what the legality is of that.
I agree with Gloria, I don't, I don't know. It, it sounds like a program can look at, the financial part of it is, is probably the largest issue. And in my particular case, I, I really couldn't care less about what deer go in and out of my yard and what around. But I, I, as a, as a trustee with the money, I don't want to see this program get too expensive, because we don't have the money for it. Now, there are some people that are real concerned about it. And if they want to invest in it and donate towards this, I don't see any reason why it couldn't be a more privately funded activity.
Mr. Zappa, we are proposing that we privately fund it.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is to be written in here, so it doesn't, so we can assuage Gloria's fears about the costs of this. If the, if the board does give approval for this activity, and if there's costs that are incurred, I don't think it's unreasonable to, uh, to ask the people that are more concerned than others for the removal of the deer to step up to the plate.
And, and you may have had access to the financial cost involved, but I haven't. So that's why my questions. And e- even if the, the whole thing costs $4,000, and we apply for $2,000 from the DNR, which is 50% of it, we would still incur $2,000. And I'm just saying that if, if this is something the board wants to do, then let's put it in the budget.
Sure, I agree. And just to address Mark's questions, good one. I don't think individuals are going to benefit from this. As Harvey has stated, we're, we're in a situation that the foliage, the, the population is such that there's a biodiversity threat. The, the ecological, you know, system is getting out of skew. A lot of people said, "We'll just let them eat until they run out of food and they'll die off." That's great.
We're doing this because we're being threatened, our plant life is being threatened?
No, the entire ecosystem of the village will be ultimately. I mean, everything that lives and breathes around here, it's going to be a problem.
You're going to destroy everything that lives and breathes in North Hudson.
I mean, being realistic, Mark.
I am being realistic.
Ask Harvey, Harvey can probably better answer this question.
I don't see it as an emergency situation.
And we don't want it to get to be one, that's why we want to take control of it.
In high deer density areas, in hunted and non-hunted areas, the damage to the native flora, especially like trilliums, the spring beauties, blood roots, these are preferred deer foods, and they are actually wiping out that plant community. They're totally stymying some of the reproduction of jet, of the Canada yew. Reproduction by the red oak in our forests across the state have pinpointed deer and herbivory, the deer family as, as being the culprits. So when you go through ag areas and you're looking at the browse lines, I mean, we don't have harsh winters here any longer. But yet the deer population's so high is that I've seen an impact on our herbage layer, on the flora, and it, they are definitely killing off our, our native plants.
Here's my only point. I, I think it's a good program, and if, I, I don't, I'm not opposed to the program. I am cautious about spending funds we don't have to save the California yew or whatever. Because we don't have large public lands, it's just been acknowledged around here. So the flora and fauna that you're talking about, you know, I've been here for 50 years. I'm not sure where you're talking, it might be some small areas, and that's great. But I don't think that's the largest concern of most of the citizens in North Hudson. It's just a nuisance factor.
Right. Our program specifically says there will be no charge to the village for 2009. We will bring a proposal for 2010 that will say the same thing. If we can apply for the grants, that's what we ask for. We will devise it from, uh, in the ecologics proposal, they had 300 hunters that applied. They interviewed 90, and they ended up taking on 25 with 20 backups. We can get the cost paid for by the individuals who want to partake in the program from the hunting end without having to charge the village. We need to work with the village, though, because we need your stamp of approval. We need you to work with us. And there is always, time is money administratively, you know, there's, there's time there. That's really all we're asking for.
Thank you.
A, a couple of points that you made, Jim, was on the application, application, and then the type of techniques that might need to go into identifying, let's say, the deer population, the abatement strategies. I think we need to contact Brad Cooley to look at some other proposals to make sure that, to get a fair shake and that the proposal from North Hudson is competitive, that we get that information, okay? Not that we're just out there shooting blanks.
No, and we've been talking with him, and, and we'll, we'll work with him. And we'll do our best to get the free money. Then we'll spend our money, and we won't ask the village for any money.
And then the other idea with the pass-through cost of the private landowner, during the normal archery and gun deer season, there is a voluntary deer donation program that's funded by the sportsmen and women who buy hunting licenses. So deer can be taken and donated or dropped off at the food, at the food lockers, so that they're processed into meat for the food pantries. Now, last year, that was halted because of scare of lead and venison, but archery-killed deer were still accepted. So that's a real plus.
Any other, any other questions?
If we approve this, I mean, we could go through 2009, get the results of 2009. Sometime in January or so, you're going to have some counts or whatever it is. You're saying there would be another proposal by your organization for 2010 for North Hudson?
Yes, this is a pilot program.
Okay. And, uh, and probably in 2010, you'd be applying for a grant. But I mean, it, just because we approve this for 2009 doesn't mean it's going to go on forever. We can look at it in 2010 and say, "This is what's happened. This is our, this is our experience with it. Is it doing any good, or, you know, do we have any comments, uh, plus and minus from the village or the residents or whatever?" You know, I just don't see why we, we can't go ahead and approve this for at least 2009 and get some experience. And, you know, we'll hear more about it in 2010, have another meeting like this, and, and, and just see where we are and, and go from there. But we're talking about zero sum for 2009 to get rid of, and I think we have a problem. I don't know how many people here think we have a problem, but I think we have a problem. Some people may not think we do, but I think, I'm, I'm here to raise my hand saying that we have a problem.
We do have a problem.
And so I'm voting in favor of it. So I, I don't know what we need to do tonight, if we need to make a motion or whatever it is, but I'm ready to-
What is it?
I'm ready to do something.
Well, I'm moving to approve this program.
Yeah, Mark.
I don't, I don't mean to step on any toes, but at this point, one of the things before, I think before anybody jumps the gun, if you will, not the archery cliche there, but we do have a village ordinance that there is no shooting of any arrows, projectiles, and all those types of things. So I think in order to make this go forward, there was some talk about permit. We don't have a permitting process right now. We have an ordinance that actually restricts any shooting within the village limits. And so I think it is something that-
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not weighing in favor or against, but I think we need to look at that administrative piece and say-
Okay, great.
If this is a pro, program that's going to go forward, we have to get our ordinance, or at least put another subset in our ordinance saying, "Per this program, these permits will be, you know, made," and those types of things. Just before we make a motion tonight, that then we're actually violating our own ordinance, as we want to make sure that we have that in place.
And hi, his proposal actually has that in there.
I was never given his proposal, so I have not seen it.
Yeah, it actually says that it's contingent on the-
Well, yeah, we don't want to be out there collecting deer and breaking the law at the same time. It doesn't work very well.
Especially when we'd have to send the police department out to arrest you guys.
Right, and he already knows we're there.
And exactly where?
Right.
Will, will you be informing the board or place the office as to exactly where these locations are?
Yes, if you'd like, it seems like we'll be working through Jim. What, what we detail in the proposal, what we're going to need is obviously some sort of a waiver of that ordinance. We're going to need a letter of engagement from the village that says, "We are your designee to implement this program." We're going to need a waiver of that ordinance, and we need a contact, and we need a contact person to work with through the board, and I'm guessing that would be Mr. Thomas.
Absolutely.
That's what we would need. And we have people from the village, if you need to hear from them, but can we-
Who is here from the village?
Who thinks we have a deer problem in North Hudson? Any, any think we don't?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What about ticks, isn't that also a problem?
They're very hard to hit, but-
Good answer, Lon.
I'm pulling deer ticks off my grandkids and-
One of the things-
... myself all the time.
And that's a very good question, I didn't mean to make light of it. But increased Lyme disease-
Lon, would you repeat the question?
Okay, the question was, what about ticks? One of the threats, and again, they're not coming down on spaceships and they're not going to carry us away, is that there is this, uh, uh, unbalance to the ecosystem. There's an increased incidence of Lyme disease, okay? And an increased incidence of car vehicle crashes. Those make sense. The more deer you have, the more deer ticks you have. The less deer you have, the less deer ticks you have. We will not be able to wipe those deer ticks out either, but we will be removing many of their hosts.
Does anybody else in the audience would like to make a comment regarding this? Please go up to the mic.
I'd just like to say, I realize you're right, the deer, it's not a problem, they're in your backyard. But when you walk outside and there's, there's 17 to 20 of them in your front yard, it, it's, it's an, it is a nuisance.
Could you please identify yourself, sir?
Gary Molesky, 208 Meadow Drive. I'm, I'm, I'm a neighbor of, of Mike and Liz Halama, who wrote the letter there. I agree, it'd be nice to get this back to a point where the deer are fun to see and where they're not chasing your dog out of your yard because it just gave birth in your backyard. They're not decimating all your landscaping, that you spend some money. And half of our yard is wild up the hill to, up to Helen Street. The rest of it, we try and make it look nice. They do their best to just, just decimate it. You know, if it was one or two every, every, every once in a while, that would be nice. But tonight, on the way over here, like Lon said, seven fawns in the open lot by Riverside Drive with one doe. You know, there is one doe out there with three fawns, not the 1.7 you hear about. And every year, it's, it's getting larger and larger and larger. And it's just, when I heard Lon propose this, I thought if there's no expense to the town or the village, and you have considered this in the past, I thought it's an excellent solution to this problem. If we can get by some of these other little things, it'd be great if we could get started with this in September, carry through January, see how it goes, and then move forward with it next year. One year would just be a help, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a couple of other points?
Sure.
Um, I'll put Lon on the spot. Are you a resident of Wisconsin or not?
I am.
Okay, that solves that. And then the other point would be-
I still want Farb, does that-
Would be on the, um, the need to really get the public out there. Get the, the, these stories in the Star Observer. And you have to get the non-hunting public, the deer lovers, the Bambi huggers, to let them know what you're planning on doing, because it's real easy to get a cohort of people here that are going to back a proposal. But try to find the people that are going to be against you, so, so that you have a chance to really face them up front right away. And that, that's really hard to do. I always had that problem when facing new decisions and new public hearings in the DNR when I'm proposing something new. So that, I, I beseech you to, to try to do that.
You know, and that's a great point, Harvey. We've actually got John from the Hudson Paper here. So it would be wonderful if the opportunity rose to be able to maybe give him some information, so that we could really get a hard-hitting, sensitive article together that, that will maybe lead the, the path for other communities to follow. I really do think that we've put something together here that is better than Grantsburg and will have the potential for being self-sufficient in the future. If we can get an amount from each person that participates to offset some of the slight cost, I think we're, we're, we could possibly cover it.
John, have you been given a River Valley Deer Management LLC document that all of us board members have?
No, this is-
Do you have that?
I don't have Lon, what's your name?
Lon, L-O-N, Feia, F-E-I-A.
You have, uh, or something?
I do. Here's the, uh- Sorry. Yes, that's, and the website is on there.
And that website is already active? I checked it out this afternoon. And it had quite a bit of the information that you have here.
It, it's beginning.
But it's very abbreviated.
It is.
And I can tell it's in its developmental stage, so.
We've, we have till Septem-, you know, we're, we're working non-stop. Once we have the approval, we can start putting these pieces in place. But we really don't have a lot of time to get the details nailed down, to be ready to go in September. And the early deer don't, they stop eating when they're not there. It's just the way it goes. So you can literally save tons of vegetation for the landowners for, you know, there's a lot of hostas between September and November, you know? And, and it's typical that in that early season, that's when you're going to be able to access the young and the dumb, um, and, and take them out.
Well, I for one, I'm getting tired of smelling deer off.
And I'm just going to step right out, I'm going to say, John, if you are putting something together, if we could reach out to North Hudson residents that have larger-than-typical lots and would be welcome to have a professional-certified hunter come in and utilize their property, please contact, um, you know, myself, or Lon, Lon, yeah, just contact Lon.
Yeah, contact us. We want to take this burden, we want to report to you, we want to be responsible to you, but we want to take the burden for implementation off of you.
Appreciate that.
And then on a legal matter, Terry brought up one issue, you can probably say it, say it.
Just, uh, will your hunters sign a waiver, uh, indemnification liability waiver?
Sure. Well, if you'll-
So that if you guys are negligent and you do some, do hurt somebody or something, that, uh, you will indemnify the village, because the village will get sued?
Certainly, and, and yes, and everyone gets sued, right? That's why we have the insurance involved.
Yep, yep.
But yes, we will also sign that waiver. If you'll provide it for us, we'll include it in the hunter package.
Yep.
Beautiful, thanks, I appreciate that. Jim, do you want to make a motion so that we could move this along?
Oh, certainly, I'd love to, yeah. I think we're done. Harvey, thank you very much. When you get an opportunity to touch base with Brad, tell him, and Lon, I can't thank you enough for all the work that-
Well, and we have Brad Coulter and, uh, now Rick Kraus, who are two of our founding members and our hunters who are here as well, so.
Good to meet you, thank you both very much, we really appreciate this.
And they are Wisconsin residents, too, aren't they?
Uh, yeah, well, I would move then, uh, hold on one second, that we adopt, should we do this in two separate motions? One, adopting a wildlife management program? And then the second, that we would, uh, appoint, um, the River Valley Deer Management LLC to-
When you say a wildlife management program, be specific on that. What are you, what, do we have that, a document to that effect? Because that's a very nebula, that would be a very nebulous-
Why don't we skip that? Let's just-
You have this proposal here from-
Yeah, yeah, let's, since we have his proposal, let's skip that. Because obviously, with his proposal, that in itself-
That is the program.
Creates the program.
So I- Can, can you also, can you make a contingent on Harvey having a chance to review it and getting back to us with his okay?
Certainly, certainly.
Is it okay to, and that Harvey, is that okay with you?
So I would move that we would appoint, or appoint River Valley Deer Management LLC to, um-
How about if you move to accept their proposal?
Okay.
Contingent on DNR approval?
I love it, I love it. We will move to accept the River Valley Deer Management proposal, contingent on Harvey's, um, Harvey Halverson's-
Approval.
Approval of the program.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe.
Let's keep going.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to say that I've been following this with Jim from the very beginning, and I was really, I'm a bit of a Bambi hugger. I love that little thing that comes in my yard, and I love to watch the deer, and so I was looking for any excuse to counter Jim and to put Jim on the spot and say, "Well, Jim, this is a tough one," but, and he's answered every reasonable question I've had, so, wholeheartedly supporting this.
Thank you.
Very good.
And if I might make a comment. Jim has been so easy to work with, wanting to address the problem and get to the core of the matter, and we very much appreciate that and look forward to working with him, assuming that, well, it goes okay.
It's quite an assumption you got there.
Ah, you know.
About to the left of me, anybody down there having more questions?
Well, I tend to agree with Sandra too, that I don't mind the three little fawns in my yard that much, although they are eating our flowers too, but I can see it as the health problems with the Lyme disease or the car accidents or just the other residents for their landscaping. And it does, you know, it is a problem, but more of the overpopulation, so I agree too that, you know, the sharpshooters, I didn't like that idea, but Lon and his group have researched this and, you know, are taking into consideration the feelings of the villagers and just have it well researched, so that, you know, I'm more, you know, in support of this than, you know, the sharpshooter idea of a few years ago.
Beautiful. Well, Lon, thank you very much. Before we vote, and while we still have the floor open, we need to adjust the ordinances that the chief did talk about, and perhaps we can prepare that for next month.
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah.
With Mark, maybe?
If you'll work with Mark on that.
Yep.
Just so that we can make sure that this is legal. Enough said on that.
And then also, I don't know the process for background checks, but I did meet with Mark today, and he will, you can work with him for making sure that everybody is got proper background checks. I appreciate you absorbing the cost of that in addition to everything else you've done. It's, you've gone way above and beyond, and myself and the entire village, thank you. That's cool. Thank you.
Okay, anything? Sure.
And by no means I want to make this any longer than it already has been, but I think in talking about the, there was some discussion on Lon's hand about certification of their shooters, and I guess part of that discussion with the ordinance, and I think in the permitting process, we need to try to find if, and again, I haven't reviewed any of the other information, and maybe these other communities have already set up their standards, and we can, you know, mimic those, but I think that there are, that process of getting the ordinance changed and putting it in, as much as it seems like a small process, I think it's gonna be something that we really have to make sure that we have in place, and I'm only envisioning the neighbor who hasn't signed that notice, who looks out his window and now sees an archer in a tree, you know, feeding and shooting at deer and reading some of our ordinances, not watching tonight's meeting and those types of things. Just, my officers are gonna be the ones that are gonna be responding to those, and I want them to be able to say that particular gentleman has a permit, you know, he may have had it with him, those types of things, and we'll obviously address those in the process of the ordinance change, but just to let you know that that is something I foresee coming as part of that process, so.
Yeah, thanks.
Hey, Mark, while you're up there, and Lon, if you could do me a favor and address this on the website, maybe with some bullets and something that, you know, nobody. Yeah, no hell with arrows. Nobody that isn't certified, that isn't part of this group is allowed to hunt, you know, just so that people are aware of it. That's a very good point, and, yes.
And again, to minimize, point them to the website. If we can start pointing them to the website, all the information they need, that kind of information will be there so that your phones aren't ringing off the hook all night long. They can look at the website and see what information was there, and they can read the proposal, and they understand what's going on, and they understand the qualifications that the hunters had to go through. I think that would be helpful.
Then if I can propose this, that there, and I'm gonna ask Sandra to work with Gloria or Becky on this, to put a link to your website from the North Hudson Village website.
Great idea.
That'd be appropriate.
Did that Sam, did that you send?
Yeah.
And then I think the last footnote we need to do is, John, if you have the connection with somebody at the Hudson paper, we need to put together a formal article that really covers all of our concerns, maybe touch on lightly now, but going forward, something that really opens everybody's eyes to what's going on, and Mark's concerns are addressed in that article, and cover these bases.
Well, maybe to take a little of the responsibility off of the editorial folks at the paper, maybe a public notice would be.
Now you're starting to incur costs. Right?
Well, it depends on how generous the paper is, if they would put out an informational-type bulletin or not.
I think people are more prone, more likely to read an article than they are a public notice.
A government notice, yeah.
I think this would be a great article, but I think we need a little time.
Any bias there?
Could I add one piece of, or request? Even though we third-party with people, we still need to have records management here, and if people call and say, "There's a gentleman here," we're gonna need to know who they are. We're gonna need to have that, those records at some point, or copies of, so that we can.
We can give you, and we've already planned on giving you, although it's not part of the proposal, a list of the approved hunters, a list of the approved hunting sites. Those will be delivered to Jim, so you know where they are, so, just because, well, somebody does.
We'll just have you deliver them right to Gloria, but also, they will be on the website.
Hey, you know, there's a naked guy with a pole in Webster Park, it's not one of us.
Right, right.
I hope.
Well, and the issue is.
I just wondered about.
That information won't do us any good at Jim's house. It has to be village, yeah.
Assuming he's the point of contact, we will get that to the village. The list of approved applicants, the list of approved sites. I would even go so far as, we need to deliver what the other programs have done, is deliver to the village a signed letter of written permission from the approved landowner sites. That's what we think should be.
Yeah.
All right, I suppose we should move on.
I would really like to do that.
You got a vote?
We have a motion on the table, it's been seconded. All those in favor, this motion please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
We're looking forward to your development in this whole cycle. It's gonna be very interesting.
Does Jim still have garbage? Garb, you know, Jim, I'm looking at this and.
This is slam dunk.
Yeah.
The next one?
Let's finish with public welfare, there's only, I think, one other item on here. It has to do with another item that's near and dear to our hearts, garbage. And it's a good thing we don't live in Alaska, because we wouldn't have had this conversation about deer. It would have been about bears eating our garbage. So, Jim, what have you got regarding?
Real simple, and this is gonna be thirty seconds, we've already touched on it last month. Gloria has rewritten the recycling service contract request for proposal. I would request now, or move that we. Why can't I get the words together? I would request approval of the 2010 garbage recycling service contract request for proposal as in your board packet.
I'm looking for it, where is it?
Should be right.
Second page after here.
Right on welfare, second page in, looks like this, Joe. Village of North Hudson, residential solid.
Ah, okay, thank you.
And basically, we revised the last one. Gloria and I and the public welfare board have reviewed it. It's ready to go, to be published in the paper, and allow anybody who wishes to bid on it, pick it up. Do I need to say more on that?
Is there any change in the cost?
Oh, this isn't any proposal yet, this is just putting the proposal out. It's basically redundant from what we did last time. Only this, now we've all had the opportunity to review the RFP, the request for proposal.
Okay, I got you.
It's, no, we don't have anything to vote on yet, so, real simple.
So, Jim, you just made the motion, is that correct?
Yep.
And we're waiting for a second.
Second.
Mark seconded before Joe could second it. Yep. All right, now, just a comment on this. Gloria and I had discussed this earlier today. Just a thought on this, is it possible that we could, instead of mailing out or making copies of this humongous document here, could we put this on our website and let our bidders print it out if they so desire?
We could do that.
Can we do that?
Yes, we could.
Yeah, that'd be a heck of a.
If you have it in electronic format, yes. Which you do, because you sent it to me.
Yeah.
Make sure you get mine, because, so it's always the last one.
If you could just make sure that you get Gloria's.
Will you send it to me in the morning?
Sure.
That would be a perfect reminder too, and I'll do it then. I also, while I'm thinking about it, I also put up the detour information today.
Ah, nice.
Under the news category.
Excellent, okay. Now, let me go back then and see if anything in this document that you just made a motion on needs to be adjusted if we agree to put the document on the website.
Well, I think timing-wise, it hasn't, this has already gone to paper. If they call and ask for it, we can tell them it's on the.
Very good, okay. We can tell them it's on the website, we can even give them, if they can't find us. By the way, it's very easy to find the North Hudson website, even if you don't know what it is. You simply Google Village of North Hudson, and there's the only, I think there's only one or two that come up, so. Okay.
Is it acceptable if somebody wants an email to them, to just email it, or is that allowable?
Sure, yeah.
So if somebody called and said, "How do I obtain one?", you could simply just get their email address and email.
Well, I would caution you on that. This document, with its illustrations and charts, is. It's what? It may be two documents, but if we put it on the website, they can pull it off a whole lot easier than if we try to email.
I like that.
It could take a long time to download this.
Was it on the website?
If you could put it on the website so that it can't be altered, that would.
Is it a PDF format now? Is this a Word document, or what is it?
Oh, I can make it into a PDF.
Yeah.
So that it couldn't be altered? Yeah, and that's the problem with emailing things, once you email it, you no longer have control over it.
That's exactly right.
But only if it's still a Word document, you can do the same thing with a PDF and an email tool.
Right.
Gloria, do you have a PDF creator or any kind of?
I can do that easily if you guys don't have that.
You know what, afterwards, I'll tell you, there's a free print driver. All you do is you download it and use it as a printer, you print to it, I'll give you the information.
All right, that'd be great.
That's what we need, more to-its.
It's really easy.
So, with that, we have a motion and a second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Anything else?
I think we just need a vote.
This isn't gonna cost us anything.
Nope, not a damn, just a vote.
All in favor of this motion for the garbage RFP? Aye.
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 Negative, same sign. Do you have anything else?
The only other thing I have is, Mark, I'd really like if in the next day or two, put together whatever you want, I'll put out an ex-invoice message or the detour also. And that is everything that I have. And I just wanted to say thank you all, I know it was long, but I think we needed to cover all of the bases on this urban archery thing, and thanks.
Can we now?
Are we done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's go down to the finance committee. So flip back to the yellow section, and the first thing I guess is to see if we could entertain a motion to pay our bills.
As soon as I find it, I'll be glad to say it.
I'd move that we approve our June 2009 non-recurring claims totaling $69,232.44.
Do I hear a second? Yep, Joe seconded. Are there any questions or comments regarding the bills before you? All right. The next item on here is a resolution.
We need a vote.
Oh. Trying to move us along here. All in favor of paying our bills, we have to do this by a roll-call vote, so I'll start at my far right.
Yes.
Jim, yes?
George, yes? Joe, yes?
Owen, yes.
Mark stepped out. Mark's not here, okay. Motion passed. We now go to a resolution appointing Gloria as the Administrator/Treasurer. Just as a reminder, folks, why we're doing this is because Gloria is no longer, no longer has the title Administrator/ Clerk/Treasurer, because we have Becky Milbrand as our clerk. So, I would entertain a motion to. I move approval of Resolution Number 2009-2006, which is a resolution appointing Gloria Troyster as Administrator/Treasurer. Is actually a reappointment, right? Okay. It is, but the way the resolution needs is.
Or realign. I'm realigning.
Okay, the resolution, as it's stated, says Resolution Appointing. Should we change that to Reappointing, just to make sure it makes any difference?
All right.
Okay. Okay, I'll approve that change. All right. I'll second. Thank you, Jim. All in favor of the resolution, indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carries. And the next one is a resolution reappointing Becky Milbrand as the Village Clerk. I'll entertain that motion. I thought you did, and I knew it's gonna second it, but if you didn't, I'll make the motion. There you go, thanks, Joe. Second by?
Owen.
Thank you. Before we vote on that, and while we're still in discussion, I would ask Becky if you would come up to the microphone up here, Becky, just so people can see you, say hello. I'm sure they will all be waving. Aye, Becky? And, how about the oath of office, can I do that tomorrow? Please. Yeah, we'll do that tomorrow morning in the village office.
Okay.
Now it's okay, there we go, thank you, Becky. Thank you, Becky. I'll administer the oath of office to Becky tomorrow morning, here at the village hall. If anybody wants to come in, they'll have to figure out when I'm gonna get there to administer it. It'll be sometime after nine. All right. And the next one, and item number four, would be accepting the resignation of the Deputy Treasurer. And I think we had a document on that one. No, we didn't. I saw it someplace.
The letters are here. Hey, George, I don't think we voted on the clerk.
Yeah, we didn't vote on Becky. Oh, okay, then I guess we better vote on Becky. All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Becky, you're now the clerk. Lori Noble had resigned, and we simply need to accept her letter of resignation. Also move.
I thought you were looking for that letter.
Second. Okay, Joe made the motion, Jim seconded. All in favor of accepting Lori's letter of resignation, indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Item number five. Item number five is the, relates to the St. Croix storage fire that we experienced in the evening of December 11th to 12th. You may recall that there were, that this was without a doubt one of the largest fires in this area in most everyone's memory. We exhausted mutual aid and ran into some additional costs outside of our mutual aid of forty-two. We exhausted mutual aid and ran into some additional costs outside of our mutual aid of $42,928. And not only that, but that, that amount also includes, about, Mark, was that about 500 cans of the foam? Somewhere around there, it was quite expensive. You have in front of you a letter from Mr. Harvey of St. Croix Ventures requesting a 25% reduction in the amount that he would be owing us. If you agree with this, he is prepared to immediately send us a check for $32,196.04. And it is my recommendation, and after checking with council, council's recommendation also, that we accept Mr. Harvey's offer and we absorb the remaining costs. I will also, I will also point out that the amount that we have here has been, well, the costs were negotiated down to that amount, $42,900, after quite a bit of deliberation. We got, Jim Frye, the fire chief, got a really good rate on the foam. We negotiated with several of the municipal, the fire departments outside of mutual aid and got them to lower their costs as well. And it would be my recommendation that we accept Mr. Harvey's offer. We'll open it up for discussion.
Having participated in the Finance Committee and going into the details of all this, I would make that motion at this point that we accept the proposal of, from Greg L. Harvey for $32,196.04. And we should mention in there also that that eliminates any future costs that Mr. Harvey would incur from the village that relate to this fire.
What a motion. Very good.
Good.
We can only get a second.
Holding my breath.
Go for it, Joe.
I will second it, then I'd like, you know, have some discussion.
Go ahead, Joe.
This is unusual for this to happen. The fire was large, as you pointed out, George. But the thing that I don't like is, is if there's any precedent setting here, that people would assume that the village is going to pick up the cost of a fire if it exceeds, you know, a certain amount. And in, in Mr. Harvey's letter, he indicated that their insurance company had denied coverage, claiming that there was no local ordinance or an agreement by contract for the service charges. And so it's, it's my assumption that if we would have had a local ordinance or an agreement by contract for service charges, that those costs would have been picked up by the insurance company. So what I'm saying is, you know, I, I would go along with this motion, and have, but at the same time, I think we need to make sure that we either have an ordinance, or some agreement, or some notification primarily of our commercial, people have commercial property here in the village, that indeed, they should be expected to pick up, you know, the costs of fires in the future if they are, you know, exceed a certain amount. And in no way is the Village of North Hudson going to, going to fund that kind of activity for them.
I agree with you completely, Joe. This is another case of where we have to revisit our ordinance that relates to this, so that there is no ambiguity, and so that this would not recur in the future. What made this an extraordinary fire is that on the evening of the December 11th and 12th, it was the cold, it was five below, at 5:00 in the morning. It was brutally cold. The reason that additional fire companies were called in is because there was a limit of 15 to 20 minutes for each of those firefighters who was out there in that bitter cold weather. Had that fire occurred during the spring, summer, or fall months, it's unlikely that we would have needed additional support from outside of our mutual aid, because they wouldn't have had that issue to deal with. This is also probably the largest complex that we have in the village. And while we could see a repeat performance of that with other buildings that are in that shopyard area, it's unlikely that we would have that problem outside of those yards. But I completely agree and would recommend that we proceed to take a look at the ordinances that relate to this, to fire problems.
My, my point in addition to that would be, is if I was a village resident, I would look at this and say, wait a minute, we contribute, I don't know, $90,000 to $100,000 in our budget annually to the fire board, to the fire department, you know, which, which Hudson, basically, the city of Hudson oversees. That ought to be enough, why am I having, why am I contributing more out of my taxes for this particular fire? And the reason is, is because we don't have any prior agreement with our, our commercial establishment. So we should fix that. And so the village board is doing that, but we got caught with a loophole in the, in the process here. So, you know, we don't want to go to court and spend a bunch of money that way, so it just makes sense, let's get that done. We've covered the loophole, and it ain't going to happen again, but yeah, we're going to have to, we're going to have to cough up about 10 grand here.
Want to comment on that?
Yeah.
I would say that we, we're solid in going after the full $42,900, if that's what the board wants.
Okay.
So I don't think there's a loophole. I think he's offering a proposal, for whatever his reasons, obviously, he doesn't want to spend all that money, but, but if, if, if he does sue us, even if we win, it's going to cost us more than that 25% discount, so that's just the cost of the lawsuit.
Yeah.
So I, I think we're solid in going after the full 42.9, but you also risk him suing you. And, and also, the other point to make is that this is a Westbin Mutual, this is part of their policy. The fact that, that they, they're not going to cover him, because there's not an ordinance or an agreement or something like that. We could certainly have an ordinance, and we'd be, you know, responding to the Westbin Mutual and, and helping other people who have Westbin Mutual insurance contracts. But we don't know what other insurance contracts might be out there that say something else, and, you know, we can't, can't cover all those.
Okay.
But, but we're, we're solid with state law that we can, we can charge this property owner for that money.
Any other comments from the board?
I have a question unrelated to, to what Joe was talking about. This is maybe a question for Gloria. He also would like assurances that there will be no additional charges related to the fire. I mean, maybe I'm being too picky here, but I'm thinking this 42.9 is fire suppression costs. Are there any other costs related to this fire that don't have to do with the fire departments? Anything else that would?
The other cost was the DNR, and there was a couple ambulance bills, but they were sent directly to St. Croix Storage. And when this started happening, I told them they had to bill them directly, so.
So we're not seeing those costs?
Right. And I, I don't know of any related to the fire suppression. We were told by the Hudson Fire Department that if they, if any had come in after this point, they wouldn't honor them anyway, that it was just kind of too late, because we'd waited several months.
Thank you.
If the board agrees with that, I would propose that, it says here, picking up on what you just commented on, no additional charges related to the fire that took place on December 11th and 12th.
Can we?
Just to be, just to be clear.
Can we say fire suppression? He got me thinking, I don't know if there's something.
Add the word suppression would be fine.
Yeah, I don't know if there's something else out there that.
Or the cost of fighting that fire, or something like that.
Yeah. Just something that, in, in the response, so that it, it's, it's very clear, we're referring to the incident that took place December, on the evening of December 11th to 12th. And any other questions, comments? And this one, I would like a roll call vote, because it will involve expenditure on our part. Or shall I say, we will not be receiving as much, just to, just to be on the safe side here. I'll start with Mr. Zap on the far end.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe?
Um, you know, in this case, I, I'm going to just vote no, because I'm not sure, it ought to be our responsibility, so I'm going to vote no.
Klein, yes? Jim?
I have the same feelings as Joe, but I am going to vote yes.
Sandra?
Yeah, ditto on that, and yes.
Thank you. Not an easy one.
No.
Understand that. Okay, Gloria, the floor is yours for the next one.
We're requesting, it's been requested of us to write off a special assessment payment that was inadvertently reported to.
All the members have this.
Where is it?
They should have it in front of them.
It's right here, you can look at that one. She'll explain it to you.
Yeah, she's got one under her book.
Circle the most important part of it, so.
All right. Basically, we're asking that we write off $627.10 in a special assessment charge that was inadvertently reported as zero balance, when, and when the state was, the estate was closed, there is no funding left to pay that, so.
But you have any questions that this is referring to? Spending, guess we're going to take a roll call? I need to have a motion, though.
By a board member, I'm guessing.
By a board.
I will move that we write off the final special assessment pay, payment of $627.10. So that we can have a discussion.
One second.
Real briefly, again, we covered this in Finance. We learnt something from this. Gloria very proactively contacted the company that wrote the computer program that does the spreadsheets. If I would have looked at this the same way that it was looked at by our Hudson staff, I would have thought there was a zero amount owed. Gloria is getting the problem corrected. It was a unique, another unique situation through an estate, there's no money left. The new owners of the home said, "Why is this outstanding assessment here?" It was a perfect storm. Fortunately, we learnt a lesson for $627.10 that could have potentially cost us a lot more than that. And it's basically a computer software glitch in my eyes. So, enough of spending.
So, let's do a roll call, Sandra will start with you this time.
Yes.
Yes, Jim.
Yes.
George, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good. We're finally done with Finance. Let's go over to Public Works.
We don't have any chair update, I don't have anything substantial to talk about other than what's in your packet. I'll hand it off to Superintendent, because our largest thing is the, the highway reconstruction.
Want me to kick this thing, and then they'll come on?
That's what happened before.
You step on the top, and.
He's got it.
Oh, he's got it. How do you do that?
He knows all those gadgets.
Well, that worked earlier.
Yeah, I won't be seeing one of them.
On the TV.
Right, basically, as you know, the State Highway 35, Sixth Street North, milling and repaving project that's going to be happening here in the village. As part of this project, we will replace in the older sanitary sewer and storm sewer manhole castings on Sixth Street North in the project area. Make it sure this work can be done, you know, as fast as possible. I have requested and received the necessary detour permits to be able to detour Highway 35, Sixth Street North from Summer Street North to Wisconsin Street North. This will be starting on next Monday, July 13th. The detour will be from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. On weekdays, basically Monday through Friday, there will be no road closures on Saturdays or Sundays. The detour will continue until July 31st, 2009. Hopefully, we'll be able to open it earlier than that, but that's right now is how good the permits are good for. Basically, all the residences and the businesses along the stretch of highway will still have access to the residences or the businesses. But through traffic will be detoured to Fourth Street North. As it's shown here, the detour route will be in red, as it's shown. The road closed area will be the black dash lines. There will be some work done in the area south of Wisconsin Street to the North Hudson Bridge. Some of those castings will also be worked on. We will do those by basically setting up a cone lane. I've already worked out with the contractor. Biggest thing that, biggest reason why we're closing this is, number one, since, basically, last week, since I was talking this with county, and they also, they decided since, well, we got that many castings replaced out there, they would like to have the village, or the village's contractor, go in and remove all the storm sewer, as many storm sewer castings as possible. So wait, the milling operation will be able to go faster. And what we're going to do is, we're actually going to go in, which is the contractor, which will be Zap right by us, we'll go in, they will cut out the castings, remove the, you know, cut away the pavement, remove the castings, we'll put down steel plates over the manholes. We will then pour in gravel to match the top of the road structure. All these castings, once milling is done, and during this work, we'll have large orange barrels on top of them, just to be able to tell people, even when the roads are open, that they're not driving to these areas. So, but gravel, basically, is if some barrel would get pushed over, and the next car coming along doesn't drop into a hole. That's what we don't want. So, there has been, each of you should have a packet in front of you, there has been a number of, you know, there's been a press release that went out to the paper, basically, thanks to Chief, or Chief, sorry, Chief Richard for that. I also, basically, we've also sent out no parking notices to everybody that will be on the detour route. It's in a separate packet, should be right there in front of everyone. So everybody on the actual detour route has been notified that they will not be able to park on the street, on any part of the detour route, from 7:30 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. The third notice you have there is a notice to all the residences and the businesses on Sixth Street North. That notice is basically to let them know of the project, and let them know that they will have access to their properties. You know, during this project, there will be times that, yeah, we might be working in front of their houses, but the contractor knows, you know, we have to let them get into their property. The third one is a memo that actually the Chief Richards actually sent to St. Croix County Emergency Communications. Basically, that is to notify EMS, fire, Sheriff's Department, any other law enforcement, you know, that needs to get through here, that there is a detour going on during the daytimes. Myself, I would like to thank Chief Richard, Gloria, and Becky, you know, for all their help getting these notices out, and personally, certainly, also. This came on pretty quick, as a thing, as all you know, it was kind of came out quick when the state brought it to us, and then it kind of slowed down for a while, and then this last couple weeks, it just started rolling over real quick. There's been a lot of changes to this and what we were talking about initially, it's gotten quite a lot bigger. So, that's basically I have there, if anybody has any questions. By myself, I will be meeting with all the different business owners, I plan on doing that tomorrow, along the route, along both the detour route and the, and the project. Just to personally go and talk to them about how they can get their customers, whatever, into their sites during. whatever, into their sites during the project.
Mark, there's probably no way of limiting, uh, semi-truck traffic on this so that a year from now, we're not faced with...
No. That is, that's the biggest reason why, uh, DOT wants this detour opened by four p.m., because they already have the restriction on the Stillwater Bridge. Trucks of so, so size can, are not allowed to cross in the Stillwater, so their trucks have to come southbound to us. We are, and basically, uh, you know, we are hoping that by, by putting the notice in the paper and hopefully putting the notice, you know, that's on WBR radio, we send to them, if they get something out, we're hoping that maybe some of these trucking companies in the area will start kinda thinking, "Well, maybe we can find a, a different route", but that, there's no way you can guarantee that. So, uh, the local, our biggest trucker, you know, our biggest one that has the trucks in here, St. Croix Storage, they already know of this. Uh, and we have, basically, you know, even before he brought it to our attention, uh, one of the guys at my department thought, you know, maybe we should actually get some trees trimmed up in there. So, we actually had, uh, St. Croix Tree Service in here two days last week, and they should be just about finished up. They've actually gone down the entire detour route and raised the vegetation. They've actually took tree limbs off and everything else, just to make sure we're not having large trucks hitting trees and bringing down limbs and stuff like that, so... That's really, like I said, all I really have. If anybody has any questions, this is kind of a quick update, just to let you know what's going on. I think you can see, we have done our best to try to notify the public as much as we can.
So, what are we asking for?
Now, right now, this was...
Possibility.
They...
I don't have my agenda with...
Storm sewer catch basin repair.
Yeah, uh, well, no, no. Uh, basically, the first one here is we got, uh, basically, uh, all you should have in your, uh, binder is a, a memo I sent to Public Works Committee on, uh, June seventeenth. Basically, it's, uh, regarding the Sixth Street North manhole castings and valve boxes. And that'll indicate there is thirty manhole castings in that project area. Five of the castings are fairly new, and we will be able to reuse them. Uh, twenty-five of the casters are old, are older and should be replaced during the Sixth Street Mill and Overlay Project. Mostly, this is just because of the years of being out there. They've been warped and banged and everything else. I gave you approximate costs that myself and the contractor have worked up on what it would be to replace those castings. Uh, basically, there's also eleven valve boxes out in that area, eight of those which will need upper valve assemblies. Again, you have a cost for those eight. Uh, basically, the manhole castings could come out of the sanitary sewer maintenance fund balance. And you'll see the balance there. Uh, the water sewer, or the water maintenance fund balance could be used and for, the money for the castings can be taken out of there. As a note, one thing that we have not looked at and could possibly look at is there is, uh, there is twenty-six storm sewer catch basins out there on the highway. All these, right now, they're inside the curb and gutter, you know, and they will not be part of the milling project 'cause they are inside the concrete, but we don't know when they're actually doing the milling overlay, if we're gonna find any voids underneath that curb and gutter near those catch basins. They'll tell us that those catch basins are leaking, you know, basically, their mortaring has to be redone. That's, so that's still an unknown, what we're gonna find there. Questions? I know Gloria has one.
I always have questions. Does this estimate per, per manhole casting, is the eight hundred apiece, and does that include, are you putting, are, is Public Works putting it in, or is there a contractor putting it in?
This is being done by the contractor.
And that includes the labor?
That includes labor and everything else, but you have to remember, this is an estimate. If we actually start finding, we start pulling those catch basins, or actually pull, sorry, not catch, it was, pull the manhole castings off some of these manholes, and we find out that the cone of the manhole is bad, or the, we start finding, some of those are brick manholes. You could easily have a certain part of the manhole that might have to be replaced. These are just, I'm just trying to give you guys, this is my, basically, my best scenario.
Is the other expense that goes along with the, the eight feet, four on each side?
That is totally different. That is that, that is that twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred, that was the estimate that the county gave you.
Right, but who's going to be doing that work? Is that part of...
That work will be done by the highway department at the same time they are resurfacing the rest of...
We won't be getting bids from contractors for that.
Nope. This is, basically, it was either we have the highway department do it when they're doing the twenty-five feet of driveline, or else we just leave that section go and don't mill it off.
Okay. That's all I need is, thank you.
I think I asked this to the finance committee, but the monies for the manhole casting and valve boxes, can they come out of the sanitary sewer maintenance fund balance and the water maintenance fund balance?
Correct. Correct. That's why I put the balances on there. The twenty-five, the twenty thousand dollars in additional, if we find thing, can come out of the, the one twenty-six, seven oh six.
Well, I would, uh, let's just, you know, I'm just gonna round it up to twenty-five thousand dollars, just to, I don't know, see if we can get things moving here, but I would approve, uh, I, I make a, I'll make a motion that we approve twenty-five thousand dollars to, uh, replace manhole castings and valve boxes per, uh, your letter dated June seventeenth, two thousand and nine.
Second.
My question to you, Mark, is that enough? You've given us an estimate of twenty-three, two?
Doesn't know.
My, uh, actual charges say, I don't know. That's actually...
Nah, that's fine. You understand why I'm asking a question. I don't want you to get almost done with the project and say the board didn't give me enough money.
No.
Unfortunately, it's gonna be one of those things where, when the street's opened, and it's gotta be fixed, and they're coming to asphalt, like, the next day or the day after, it's gotta, you don't, it's, it's gonna get fixed.
I agree with you. So, it's gonna get done? If he needs more money, he's gonna let us know?
Somehow, well, there, it, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I was just thinking, you know, since, my main concern is our budget, so that we don't go over our budget and we, we dip into our remaining funds that we have. These funds are balances that actually build each year because we don't spend all of the money.
Right.
And so, I don't have a problem in, you know, I just said twenty-five, but if somebody wanted to say thirty, and we think that ought to be enough to replace a couple of them, then, then I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
The problem with thirty is it goes over the twenty-five thousand dollar, you need to go out for bid.
Oh, okay.
If it goes over twenty-five...
Twenty-five was a good number, Joe.
Okay, lucky guess. Okay. Let's leave it at twenty-five.
Is that right, Terry?
Yes, in general, um, I'm trying to think about what, what Mark said, though, you know, if you're, you got the road open, you're right there, you're doing something, and it has to be done. I, I think there's something in there about some kind of emergency...
I read that, too.
Well, right, but if you're, you're...
We went over this at Public Works.
Initially.
There is, yeah. There is always a, basically, what it comes under, and Terry, you can tell me wrong, basically, what I was always explaining to me when I went to my meetings when, through this kind of construction stuff, is that if there is something that you believe could endanger the life of an individual resident or somebody passing through yours, and you do not do nothing, you are more liable than fixing the problem when you find it. Correct, Terry?
Yeah.
Right, and that's in a case of emergency, but if you're, if you're approving this before anything and you're going over, then it needs to go out for bid. But if you stop at twenty-five...
There's no...
You're, you're, you're fine.
Any other questions? Roll call. Mr. Zap, do you wanna start?
Yes.
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 Next one, Mark, while you're up there.
Uh, next one you have is, we have a, eight storm sewer catch basins in various parts of the village of North Hudson that are in, let's say, very bad shape. These are, these castings could, well, some of them already are developing sinkholes around them. Others, we know that the mortar joints are getting bad, especially the rings are getting bad, they're deteriorating. And if a heavy vehicle would continue to run over these castings, you could have a collapse. And then the next vehicle coming by, maybe a smaller vehicle or some kid riding a bike or something hits them, you could have an injury. So, I am requesting, even though, the reason I'm bringing this to, oh, let me give you a little background history. Normally, right now, we place, uh, two to four castings a year, just because of, we find them bad. This is the largest number we've ever had at one time. Uh, my biggest thing is we have to, uh, you know, I believe they all need to be fixed. I was asked at finance if some could be, uh, left, you know, some are more important than others. I believe all of them need to be fixed. So, I am requesting that we, uh, I'm requesting that we have these castings fixed. Anybody have any questions?
Would an example of one of these jobs be the one that, the two that were repaired down on Riverside Drive recently?
No, those are actually manhole castings.
Okay.
These are catch basins. These are storm sewer catch basins. The manhole castings, like they did on Riverside Drive, is basically what they're gonna be doing on Sixth Street.
Okay. We're gonna need photographs of this, or artist renditions of these things. This is out of my area of expertise.
What we just did, if you look at the new one, that was disinstalled on St. Croix Street, that is a, that is a, no, that's a storm sewer catch basin.
It's a storm sewer catch basin.
Well, to move things on, if I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we use up to twenty-three thousand dollars of board-designated funds to, uh, to replace the eight manhole castings.
Eight storm sewer...
Eight storm sewer castings. I'm sorry, I knew that, but I said it wrong.
Catch basins.
Catch basin, yeah.
These things.
Approve twenty-three thousand dollars for the two thousand and nine catch basin improvement projects, uh, per proposal dated. Has this got a date on it?
Uh, actually, it's, uh, five twenty-seven oh nine.
I'm looking for a second.
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 Okay, thank you, Sandra.
I was going to, I just got...
Yeah, no, it's kinda dozing off there for a minute. I, I know I am. For those who aren't watching the clock, it is now about ten after ten. Okay, any other discussion while we have this motion on the table, and, uh, Mr. Ekblad is up at the microphone? Because this is a spending item, roll call. Sandra, you wanna start?
Yes.
Klein, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll abstain. I, I should've abstained on the other one, too, I guess.
Okay. And Mr. Zap abstains.
Although I don't have any reason to, and I don't care.
Yeah, understand, understand. All right, I agree. I agree. Now, I see part of Public Works here, um, there's a, it's not on the agenda, but I, is this on part of chair update, Kevin? That, I mean, you've been waiting for this for three, over three hours.
Actually, uh, I did pass the discussions with Gerald last week, since he's not here. Um, he wants to defer that till next month. There'll be some discussions on that. Basically, it's in regards to the shopyards, a lot of it.
Yeah, yeah. We, we got the picture here.
Yep.
Great, let's defer it.
Okay.
Consider it deferred. Do we have to have a motion to table, or...
No, because it's not even on the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Then we can't talk about it anyway.
No.
No, it was a chair update.
Yeah, it was, yeah. All right. I think public safety's gonna be... Joe, it looks like public safety's gonna be real, real brief here.
We have no, we have no report.
No meeting.
Yeah, 'cause there was no meeting.
No meeting, no, even when we have meetings, sometimes we don't have a report.
Yes, exactly. Read your, read what, read the minutes.
Um, Mark, were you, this wasn't where you were, huh?
I don't even...
Oh, okay. I thought you were gonna give a demo or something. Would've fit right there of public safety. Let's skip public welfare and go to the park board.
Well, I'll be quick again. Um, our main thing, um, we are working on getting the playground set up in the ridges, our, um, Derek Development. On the park board, we'll be looking at the site with Ron Derrick on Monday at six, um, to kind of figure out the layout of where the playground equipment will be. And then later that evening, should be choosing which playground equipment, um, we will be putting in. My other thing, um, we would like to get a sign for Jensen Memorial Park. We kind of continue updating our signs. And on the issue statement, um, it should be new sign for Jensen Memorial Park instead of Eagle Woods Park. Um, and on the pictures, it's actually the top picture, um, but instead of the script in the middle, it would have the block letters as shown on the bottom. So, I, uh, move to approve the purchase and installation of a sign from Weibo Signs for Jensen Memorial Park, not to exceed four hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
It's the top one, except that's...
Is that you, Jim?
Yeah.
Um, when we look at these, let's see, I'm gonna look at the size of this, two by, two foot by three foot. Is this the same as size as the one that came under?
The last two that purchased while we were in the same town, they had a sign, people on the park sign, they...
Understand. Jim, has there been any further discussion on the objection to the size of that one that's at the, over on Cedar?
I know with the homeowner on that one, that sign was actually, in fact, the end of that top cap, it's just, it's actually on Park Mall, we're saying, you know.
Right.
I guess if some homeowners come to me, and they come to you, and I went and talked to Judy Rogers, who was, uh, on duty for years.
Right, the, yep.
And basically, what I do is we're moved back to the end of the cap, so it's just right up between where her property ends and the park.
It's just backwards, yeah. Can we still get a squad car through there?
You need a squad car there?
Mm-hmm.
When it opens, when it's on your squad car, what?
I'm taking care of you, Mark. It's okay, we gotta make sure.
I don't, I don't know. Eight, nine, it's only six, six posts.
The size of that thing, that post, I, I mean, you could run into that with one of your snowplows and dent the truck. It's one big post.
We've had park signs smaller, and I found them laying everywhere, every other direction from the park when they're supposed to be, you know, every opposite of the park. It's better off making it big.
You gonna put it in concrete?
No.
Oh, okay, just...
But you can't do that in case a squad car runs into it.
We gotta have a little levity, it's late. Um, any other discussion about the sign? All those, we gotta do a roll call, 'cause we're spending four hundred and fifty bucks. Okay, that was a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
You got anything else, Colleen?
Well, the other thing was, um...
I know you do.
Going, it'll be quick.
It's all right.
Um, we had, you know, as you know, we had been discussing the possibility of a skate park, um, which, um, you know, did not pass. However, the American Ramp Company said that they would come and give a skate ramp demonstration at no cost to us. Um, and this had come up, they could've come, like, last weekend. Um, and so, we were just wondering if, if an opportunity arises again when they're in the, the Twin Cities area, um, if we would be able to just have this demonstration as kind of a fun activity for the kids, um, just to see what it's like, even if we're not having the park, just to kind of give them an idea. And so, we're just wondering if that opportunity rose again, if we could probably, possibly do it just on Seventh Street in front of the Village Hall for a couple hours one afternoon.
They, they have seen if I didn't move the site, they could use, uh, we cannot use the school property just because, you know, it's not our property. We have no parks that we can do it because we need a hardened surface. The only suggestion I had is that if we, uh, have enough time, be able to notify neighbors across the street from us, also notify the police department, then we could possibly set some barricades, just close off this block. It'd have to be at some time after, you know, work hours or else notified.
They could, they could use the, the asphalt behind, by the car wash and, um, laundromat there if they'd like to.
Thank you.
I wonder if, uh, having something like this... I wonder if having something like this as a demonstration, because let's face it, this is actually a sales promotional thing that this company wants to do, is setting an anticipation for the eventual installation of a skate park. I was under the impression that, that that horse had died.
Basically, what it was is it had died for Summer's Landing Park, but they were just looking at other possible locations.
There doesn't seem to be any.
Well, you know, here's my point on that, is that if you have a demonstration, it gets people out and about in the community, it's promoting commerce to a certain extent. You know, I don't have a problem with doing it, and if, you know, if somebody comes forward with, again, with another skate park proposal or whatever it is, you know, we can look at it again if, if it goes through your committee.
Well, I'm not sure what kind of approval we need to give or not give, because it's not costing anything.
Yeah, I don't know. We don't need to approve it.
And it's going to be on private property.
It's a courtesy, Colleen's mentioning it, so...
Yeah, I don't think we need to get approval.
If we were going to do it on a city street, yes. If we're going to do it on Mark's property.
There we go.
Well, I think if you're doing it in that park in front of, right where people didn't want it, that would be an affront, but as, as side, if these folks are willing to do it, they're, they're accustomed to setting up and doing these things, and if some kids have a little fun for a couple hours at this company's expense, what they...
Okay. So, we don't need to...
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you, Mark.
Send that with dispatch. Are we done?
Do we need to make a motion to convene in the closed session, 1985, 1C?
To be, to consider employment and compensation?
Yes, yes.
I think we do. You want to make that motion?
Well, yes, I would like to, very much like to make that motion.
The record show that Mr. Cawthorn made that motion, and, ah, the president seconded it, okay.
Thank you all very much.
Mark, were you, didn't you have some kind of a demo that you...
It's 10:20.
Okay.
It was about the...